Do I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Purcell, Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to exempt Application One from compulsory attendance due to religious exemption in Montgomery County Public Schools?
Second.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Parton? Any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to exempt Application Two from compulsory attendance due to religious exemption in Montgomery County Public Schools?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Bond, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to exempt Application Three from compulsory attendance due to religious exemption in Montgomery County Public Schools?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Parton, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five, five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Purcell, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. All right. That brings us to our MCPS Mission and Belief Statements. Our student representatives tonight are Avi Gandhi from Christiansburg High School and Cyrus Underwood from Eastern Montgomery High School. Will you please read our Mission and Belief Statements?
So, MCPS is an innovative educational community. We value diversity and we are committed to equity and inclusion. MCPS empowers learners to realize success in an ever-changing global society through collaboration with communities, families, staff, and students. MCPS provides a safe, engaging learning environment and intentional exposure to positive social, emotional, and academic experiences.
One, all students can learn in order to pursue, to pursue their dreams. Two, schools are safe places of joy, wonder, and creativity. Three, every person deserves to be loved, valued, and respected. Four, kindness is an essential skill of a responsible, productive, community member. Five, the diversity of our community is one of our greatest strengths. Six, all people deserve equitable access to opportunities and resources. Seven, every child deserves an advocate. Eight, honoring the voices of our students and other stakeholders strengthens the school community. Nine, open communication and feedback are vital to our growth. Ten, learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community. Eleven, relationship building and high expectations are foundational to student success.
Okay, thank you both. Our next agenda item is public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the board sets aside thirty minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in thirty-minute increments, which Ms. Stanley will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after ninety minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional thirty-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the board. I will call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has thirty seconds remaining and when their time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county that you live in. And our first speaker tonight is Ms. Kimberly Williamson.
Kimberly Williamson, Christiansburg. First, I want to thank you, Ms. Franklin, for clarifying and answering a question I had at the last meeting about terminology used in the K-3 grading structure. I really didn't know, and I appreciate that you took the time to answer. Likewise, I want to thank you, Dr. Gitry, for the questions that you often ask in these meetings. Like you, we want to understand exactly what is on the table before the board. The questions you ask are helpful. Tonight, I want to express why I believe the direction you all are going with DEI is harmful and dangerous. The ultimate problem of offense is not an external one, even the egregious historical offense of slavery and segregation. At that time, racially-focused corporate changes were appropriate, but the ultimate problem of offense now and then is internal. The problem lies squarely with the potential of every human to hurt or be hurt by one another. It is what is called sin in the heart of mankind, and we have all experienced it. Once racial remediation settled into our national systems, blame could no longer be placed corporately, but the internal pain remained. Of course, outward justice, such as discipline for an individual, is appropriate, but that can never fix the offense internally and didn't fix it when outward justice came nationally. An offense picked up must be put down. In other words, there must be forgiveness to solve the pain of offense. Forgiveness has nothing to do with the offender and everything to do with the offended. It may help to reconcile relationship, if possible, but forgiveness's primary purpose is to take yourself off the hook of pain to help heal the wound that offense has caused. Without forgiveness, offended people will use their clouded perceptions of the world created through the lens of offense to create external solutions for a world in which that external or corporate problem, such as systemic racism, doesn't anymore exist. But by viewing the world through offense and relentlessly pushing DEI narratives such as racial identity politics and blame to justify corrections to that false perception, the end result is to create the very thing you perceive you are fighting. The solution? Change the offense-colored glasses. Forgive individuals, be reconciled if you can, and begin to see the world through healed and whole hearts, not wounded ones. I hope this makes you all think outside your paradigm for just a moment.
Thank you. And seeing no one else signed up for public address, public address is closed. And that takes us to our consent items. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved. I guess I did note, one of the field trips, I think the date is wrong. It's listed for March twenty-five, I think it should be March twenty-six, the Auburn Middle School one, I believe. All right. Do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial summary report for August 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills as presented?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Purcell, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And that brings us into our business meeting, and we'll start off with a report from Superintendent. Dr. Lois Graham will provide our report from Superintendent.
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for the warm welcome that I have received. I could not have asked for a warmer welcome, and I have very much appreciated all the kind words, encouragement, and offers of support. It simply affirms what a wonderful community and school system Montgomery County has. I'm happy to be here for the interim period. I'm also excited about the board's selection of BWP as a search firm to assist in finding a permanent superintendent. Dr. Kevin Kastner and Dr. Wayne Harris from BWP are both here tonight, and they'll be presenting later. I've worked with both of them before, and I want to commend the board on their excellent choice that you have made in that firm. During my time here, I hoped to spend a lot of time in schools. After all, that's where the students are. And I've started a walk-and-talk journey where I will be visiting every school. Yesterday, I visited Montgomery Central, Christiansburg Middle, and Fallen Branch Elementary. Today, I was at Eastern Montgomery High and Eastern Montgomery Elementary. The enthusiasm of the staff and the students is just so impressive. I'd like to use this time also to remind everyone to be vigilant while driving. During my first few days here, we've had about three or four bus accidents with cars running into the back of a bus. Fortunately, in only one of those accidents were students on board, and no one was hurt. I want to commend our nurse, the drivers, our law enforcement, everyone who handled that in a very smooth manner, and just ask the public to please be aware. Students are on the road, students are driving, they're in the buses, it's a busy time. Please watch for those buses. I also want to commend a few principals. Kate Stewart and Christie Sparks attended the recently-appointed Administrators Academy last week, which is an excellent program for new administrators. Melinda Morgan from Christiansburg Middle School has been selected to participate in the Principal of Distinction cohort. Only thirty-one principals from across the state were selected for that cohort. And finally, Dr. Johnson from Blacksburg Middle School, along with Michelle Knotts, rallied with the students and the community to do a "Can the Principal," which they gathered over a thousand canned goods to donate to Micah's backpack program. So, very happy to be here and very proud of Montgomery County Schools. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that update. Board, any questions or comments? Okay, great. All right, next up, Dr. Brett Adenowitz, the Radford University President, and Rob Graham, Superintendent of Plaskett County Schools, will present information on the New River Valley Governor's School for the Arts and Humanities.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, everybody, and I've had the chance to meet several of you before, but I do go by Brett. It's a lot easier than my last name, so feel free to call me that. And Rob and I are excited to present this Pending Governor's School to you, and we're really appreciative that Superintendent Bregan, along with Laura Purcell from the board, and apparent Helen Fotinos actually helped from Montgomery County's perspective to develop this proposal. We are planning to launch this in fall 2026, and I'm going to be providing a high-level overview of kind of how the school functions, and then Superintendent Graham's going to be giving a little bit of an insight into how it helps the school systems and actually the parents and students of those areas. And I do believe we've got two Superintendent Grahams already, so we may have to start using first initials here. So first of all, this is not a new enterprise for Radford University. We currently run three governor's schools. Those were all over the summer period, but we also have worked very closely with New River Community College in developing this, and they run the STEM Governor's School for our area during the academic year. And I, there is a folder that you will have in front of you, and the two handouts for tonight's presentation are actually on the right-hand side of that. The first handout just gives an overview of how the Governor's School will work, and I will be covering that at a very light level, and then I'll be going into more detail about the actual schedule, which is the second page of that handout. And of course, there's material about Radford University, and I'm always happy to promote the institution to y'all. So, most academic-year governor's schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia are taught, or the courses only are taught, to students within the governor's school. This governor's school is very different. It's based on models in other states, including one at Florida Atlantic University, where I worked for a number of years. And in this instance, the students work or sit directly in classes taught by university faculty among other college students. So the students themselves are sprinkled in among college-level students. And sometimes that's a surprise to people, but believe it or not, when students, when there's not governor's schools in their area, very often students will dual-enroll at their local community college. They will attend the community college themselves. There was never an incident at Florida Atlantic University. I mean, people are concerned about underage I mean, people are concerned about underage, under-18-year-olds being in college classes. There's no known incidents there. I'm not familiar with them. We have a big network of people. Nobody is familiar with negative incidences that are occurring. By the way, we do have policies to cover and to govern youth on campus and working with them. So, first of all, this gets, this governor's school does get students ready for college-level work. It's a little bit different. They do not take a survey of classes, which is a lot of governor's schools, you take a little bit of this and a little bit of that. The students here will select a track in the arts or in the humanities. So if they select a track in English, they are going to have virtually all their classes focused on English. The great part about this is they're taking university-level classes that they are excited about. We know that the students can be successful when they're selected for this, and at the end of the governor's school, they can have up to 30 credit hours of credit, which yes, is at Radford University, but it should be transferable to most institutions, public institutions. Private institutions can be a little bit different, but it should be largely transferable. If you think about that, then financially for that student, they've received a full year of university, they've earned sophomore status, and they haven't had to pay for that. So it really allows them to accelerate their time in university and lowers the cost of attending university. And once they're shown to be successful in those classes, it's much easier for the students to have the confidence and the study skills to be successful in other classes around that. Now, it's not just college credit. As you're aware, the national narrative sometimes says that if you go into the arts of humanities, there is no employment. Okay? Well, I will tell you that those students are employable. We actually have partnership currently with 15 different businesses from Abingdon up to Roanoke that are in the arts and humanities, and they will be working with our students throughout this experience to show them what career tracks look like, what employment looks like in those fields in this area. So it's not just college learning, it is employment and career preparedness, even while those students are in high school in these areas. So, I do want to go through in a little bit detail just what this looks like in that second handshake, or second sheet, which is a lot of colors on it. In the sophomore year, students, it's showing a difference there between students in the arts or the humanities. The students in their sophomore year will be in Kyle Hall, that is our business building, beautiful building, okay? That's where they will be. They will be taught by individuals that we will be hiring, who are likely high school teachers, that are going to be teaching their sophomore year. That goal is to get the students accelerated in their learning, so they are ready for the college-level classes the next semester. So a student that is interested in English, for example, or in the arts, they will be taking a high school-level English class that is focused and taught with an arts perspective. A student in the humanities will be taking that same course, but with a humanities focus. Again, it's the content that the students are excited about. They're more likely to thrive in that environment. So, with those students, there's also going to be a block of time where they're going to be working on collaborative projects with other students in the governor's school. They'll do that in the morning, and each afternoon they'll return to their high school for continuing to take the courses that are necessary to ensure that they're going to get a high school diploma. If you flip the sheet, the junior year, this is where the students will begin dispersing on campus. Their English class that they would take is university-level, that will be taught by a New River Community College faculty member on Radford University's campus. Then there's a 100-level course in that fall semester. That's for them to choose. So if they're interested in history, it's going to be a history class, okay? Their second semester, they would be taking the second composition class, again, taught by a New River Community College faculty member, and then 100-level class, again, if they're interested in history, it's going to be a history class, okay? If they're interested in visual arts, then they will be taking visual arts classes. You'll see that there's study hall available for those students. Again, in the afternoon, they would be returning to their high schools. And in their senior year, each semester, the student would be taking three university-level classes in the morning. They're going to be busy, but these students are going to be able to handle this. Those are courses that the students are going to be selecting. They can be selecting that in consultation with their parents. All of our faculty that are going to be teaching these classes will have gone through how to work with gifted students. It's going to be part of our Center for Innovative Teaching and Learning. And so our faculty, they are talented faculty, but they'll also make sure that they know how to work with these students specifically. So that is a kind of a high-level overview of how this works. I'm sure I left a lot of gaps, and also I left out really the student perspective and the school perspective. And if Superintendent Graham could give you that overview?
Thank you, President Brett. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Graham. I am so excited for your appointment, and congratulations. I'm close by if you need anything in your new role. Look forward to working with you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about a transformative vision, one that would significantly enrich the educational landscape of southwest Virginia. I come to you not only as a superintendent, but a voice for thousands of students across the New River Valley who deserve the same access to advanced arts and humanities programmings as the peers in their more metropolitan areas. Today, I'm here to advocate for the creation of the New River Valley Governor's School for the Arts Humanities located on the campus of Radford University. As you all are aware, the New River Valley is home to a vibrant network of school divisions: Pulaski, Montgomery, Radford City, Floyd, Giles, and beyond. Our students are talented, they're curious, and they're passionate, but what they often lacked is access, access to advanced arts instruction, interdisciplinary humanities programs, and pre-advanced arts instruction, I'm sorry, pre-professional experiences that can set them apart in college applications and future careers. A governor's school, especially one situated at a strong liberal arts university like Radford, would give our students a chance to grow in a rigorous college-level environment. Currently, many of the students must travel hours or relocate for similar opportunities, or worse, they simply go without. Your approval of this initiative would allow them the opportunity for school choice and access, which is what our students need and deserve. While we deeply value STEM education, we must also recognize the transformative power of the arts and humanities in shaping critical thinkers, empathetic leaders, and culturally literate citizens. In a time of AI, automation, and global uncertainty, creative and human understanding are more important than ever. This school would focus on visual arts, music, theater, dance, creative writing, literature, philosophy, and history, interdisciplinary projects, blending arts, ethics, and civic responsibilities. It would offer students pathways into college programs like arts administration, law education, public policy, and of course, the arts themselves. The value here isn't just career readiness, it's human readiness. Radford University is uniquely positioned to host this school. With its strong college visual of performing arts and commitment to regional engagement, Radford brings the following: world-class faculty to serve as mentors and adjunct instructors, facilities like state-of-the-art performance halls, galleries, and studios, collaboration opportunities with university students creating a near-peer mentorship model. Additionally, the university is central-located within the New River Valley and makes it accessible for students across multiple counties with reasonable transportation logistics. The governor's school isn't just an academic opportunity, it's regional advancement strategy. Southwest Virginia has been long underrepresented in state-advanced education initiatives. Establishing this, this school sends a clear message that artistic and intellectual excellence is not limited by geography or zip codes. And there's another benefit: talent retention. When we show our most promising students that their gifts are recognized and nurtured here, we increase the chances that they will contribute and lead here in our communities, our local economies, and our civic institutions. We are already in conversations with local school divisions, arts organizations, and Radford University to lay the groundwork for shared support and cost efficiency. This would be a half-day model, very similar to other governor's schools, allowing students to remain enrolled in their home schools while receiving specialized instruction at Radford University. We envision cross-district transportation solutions, dual enrollment credit opportunities, grant-seeking partnerships for scholarships and programming. We are not asking for a blank check, we are asking for a collaborative investment, one that multiplies in value through student achievement, regional pride, and cultural enrichment. In closing, I ask you to imagine the ripple effects of this school. The Mary Ingalls-Wilder story highlighted by a Radford High School student at Glencoe Museum, a high school artist from Pulaski County High School publishing her first children's book, a young violinist from Blacksburg High School performing on a university stage, or a theater student from Floyd County High School discovering his voice and his purpose. The school can be a home for them, a launchpad and a beacon. I urge you to support the creation of the New River Valley Governor's School for the Arts and Humanities, not just for what it will offer students, but for what it will inspire in communities across our region. Thank you so much for your time and your leadership and your belief in the potential of every child in Virginia. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both for presenting. Is that, is that it?
That is it. If you've got questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay, great. I definitely want to say thank you both for being here tonight and taking time out of your busy schedules to come present to us. And I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Who wants to start?
I'll just start.
We'll get to the students as well. Let me get through the board first. Absolutely. Thank you.
I also wanted to thank you both for being here tonight. I've really enjoyed being able to be part of the planning process. And while I've given updates to the board, Dr. Bregan did, Mrs. Fotinos did, for us to approve it, I know we kind of needed an official presentation, and I wanted to be sensitive to the time because with starting in fall '26, kids may be, you know, needing to think about their applications before too long, and our year will slip away before we know it. So I just wanted to provide that context, and thank you again for being here.
Dr. Roundtree?
Thank you all for the presentation. Just filling in a little bit about the activities that go on, can you describe a little bit about what disciplinary projects and collaborative projects will look like in the school?
What I can tell you is just, I can give you a couple of examples, okay? But the reality is, is that that really ends up being between the student and the faculty members and discussing what excites them, right? So as an example, in our Department of History, they have a digitization process where they take former paper documents, they scan them in and analyze them, and they actually use those as the foundation for research at looking at change through time and really bringing new documents to light. That is a project that is completely accessible by high school students. We have a whole range of freshmen to seniors in the university working on that, bringing in high school students, and you're continuing to bring those students up to university-level learning, where they're learning from their peers. And the advantage from a university student perspective is it's also really helpful to explain to a process to somebody that doesn't know as much about it, because you learn as well, right? So that's an example of a project in history. In the arts, for example, in, from a music perspective, we have both community symphonies and other opportunities, small groups, where the students themselves would be participating. So it depends on their interest, and again, ultimately depends on the students that are there and what they're interested in. Because we've got such a range of faculty, we don't want to be prescriptive and say, choose A or B. That's not the goal of this. The goal is really to excite students about what's possible in the university.
Thank you, and this is definitely an exciting opportunity for southwest Virginia and the New River Valley.
Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Good evening. So I see this as a wonderful opportunity also, and my concerns are not so much with what you all have already laid out and planned, but it is how Montgomery County makes sure that our students from an early age are given the opportunity and the exposure to the arts and humanities so that they can envision themselves being prepared for this governor's school.
So, I can only speak towards Pulaski County, and I'm superintendent in Radford City, too. And when you look at the southwest Virginia Governor's School, we really use our folks that are in our gifted and talented programs and our gifted and talented faculty and staff to really highlight those opportunities for those families who want to consider that. So, right now, what we're doing to, for this vision, is to also do that in Pulaski County, and not only make the community aware of the southwest Virginia Governor's School, but now also the New River Valley Governor's School for the Arts and Humanities. And we're starting that in the elementary schools. Even though we have approval from the Virginia Department of Education, you know, it's still a little bit of a ways away before we have our first incoming class, but we are pushing hard for our elementary students to be able to know that they will have an opportunity out there to really experience the opportunity to share their gifts and talents in those areas with us.
As a district, I'm sure we're going to have more discussion about that, but thank you all.
Dr. Gitry?
Thank you for coming this evening and for all your work on the initiative. So, I'm a history professor, so you don't need to sell me on the value of the humanities. So I just have a couple of questions. So if I'm understanding this correctly, so for the sophomore year, the students who come to Radford, they are, those classes that they're taking are not the college-level classes, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
They're tailored classes in their area of interest, but they cover the high school content to keep them on track to having all the courses necessary to complete their high school degree. But they're just taught, you can think of it as an accelerated level, so they're going to be likely more challenging than that same class that they would have had in high school.
Yeah. Okay, great. So then, so I was trying to do the math. I was like, so the junior and senior year, when they're taking the, when they're working on the disciplinary projects and collaborative projects?
Yes.
Are they, are they, those blocks, are they part of a course that's going to, that will qualify for college credits? You know, like AP Research is a class you can take in the high school that you get AP credit for. There's no designation. So I was like, are these just kind of independent projects that they're doing?
Yeah. So, they don't need those credits to graduate from high school. There's a separate page in the proposal that shows how it all maps, right, where they get sufficient credit. So in those blocks of times, those can be extensions from the classes. And I will say, some of this is TBD, right? So there can be extensions from the classes. So if they're taking a digital history class, that may be when they're doing the concentrated lab work on campus, because it may be more difficult for them to commute back and forth. That said, that's an example. Another example is, we have lots of research opportunities on campus where the students are working with others, not always for credit, but because they want to. And that provides those opportunities for those students. So I will go back to the music example, because they're participating maybe in a quartet where they're practicing, they're doing that because they love to do it. No, it's possible it's tied back to a class, and I'm going to say it depends on the student and the classes they take. But we want to make sure that we've got time in case there is additional work outside of class, that we've got it reserved in their schedule.
Yeah, and thank you for that elaboration. So, are faculty, is there designated faculty members who are going to be with all of these students during those periods? Or how does that, how's that going to work? Because when I was looking, I was like, this is great. This is a lot of labor. And I mean, as a faculty member, like independent studies, that's above and beyond when I do. I was like, who is going to be doing all of this labor? So I know that you're going to hire somebody who's going to be teaching those introductory courses in that sophomore year, but do you have the agreements, the labor lined up to do all of these projects?
We do. It's going to be atypical that it would be a one-on-one project with a history faculty member and a student. It can happen.
Yeah.
There's nothing that precludes that. And, you know, we've got faculty that really embrace that type of work. This is more likely to be group projects. And again, depends on the group. It could be a group of just students that are in the New River Governor's School that are doing this, and it could be that they're actually combined into a group of freshman college students or a range of college students. So it really depends on the project. Almost all of our faculty do group-level research projects and independent projects with students. So it's, this whole governor's school, rather than thinking of that as extra work for our faculty, we've tried to build it where it's based on open availability in their current schedules. So, the other part of Radford is, we do try to hire faculty that want to work with undergraduates and youth in the type of work they do, so they kind of lean into this space. So, will they be a little busier? Absolutely. But our faculty are very excited about this as well. So will they be a little busier? Absolutely. But our faculty are very excited about this as well. You know, I, I haven't heard a lot of faculty concerned about the additional work from this because if you saw the numbers of students in this, there's about 40 students a year coming into this. I'm going to say they're going to split half and half into arts and humanities, right? So that's 20 students in the humanities. Well, you've got philosophy, you've got English. So when we actually start getting down to the individual department, it's kind of a handful of students. And so it's really within the workload of our, of our faculty.
Okay. Great. Other questions, but I'm, I'm sure we're going to have more conversations.
We also have a, we've sent out, and we can send this to you, I think you all have it, but the job description for our executive director too. And we feel like that that is going to be somebody who can really bridge the gap between the public school entity and the university teachers as well. That is going to be somebody that we are going to choose that, that really has, you know, experience in gifted and also with arts and humanities too. And I think that'll really help.
Okay. Great. I would love to see that the, the project part of it given a little bit more like structure and meat so that, you know, they, because this has sustained these students over an extended period of time. And if it's just, you know, intellectual interest, you know, we know how students are, but we know that if, if it, if it counts towards something and, and if they get like AP credit for research or something like that, then they have goals to work toward. But thank you so much for your work and I'm looking forward to the future with the governor's school.
Thank you.
Ms. Pardon?
So thank you both for being here this evening. I know you both are very busy gentlemen, so we sure do appreciate your time. Cannot tell you how excited I am to have the governor's school back. And the fact that you had mentioned that in collaboration with this side of the state in Southwest Virginia, all the opportunities that will be given to our children here that don't necessarily, if you lived in a different location such as Northern Virginia, would have more ample ways and means to, to get into some of these disciplinary tracks. But I know there hasn't been quite as much emphasis on some of the arts and the, and the humanitarians as the STEM and STEAM program. So I'm so excited for these kids who are and have an interest in this to get that up to where the other one is to kind of come full circle for the ones. Because I've known several that have been interested in these things and there just hasn't really been anything like this for them to go to. And so they do have to go away. They do have to move to other parts of the states. And a lot of time, they move all the way across the country. So by doing this, trying to keep them here, and we have so many great things here they can collaborate with, with Radford, with Virginia Tech, with, you know, Roanoke, you know, and, and even here. So thank you guys so much. And whoever did all of this work, I know there's been a lot of people I want to thank them too. Especially the fact that you are incorporating the high school with the interest, with those regular courses too, to keep them on track. That's great because that's going to pique the interest and that's going to keep them going. So that'll help them with graduation as well. And there's a lot of reluctance when you walk onto a college campus when you're a freshman. And to have been there and kind of have that guidance and kind of know what to expect, I think it's going to relieve some of that social and emotional and mental wellbeing. I think it's going to come full circle with not just the instruction, but with the overall general emotional and mental health issue. I think it'll help tremendously as well.
And, and if I could add to that, that's interesting. You, you bring up a point that wasn't a tension point, but a difference of opinion initially because we were talking about, well, at the sophomore level, the students actually could stay in their high schools and get this, and the superintendents and the parents were like, no, 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 no. Culturally, they have to get ready to a university. They have to get the commute. They have to start feeling like they're on a college campus. And so we, we listen to the smarter group.
Absolutely. And I can see them saying that. But, you know, preparing them on that level that you're speaking because we can prepare them up here, but, you know, emotionally and mentally, it's a, it's a very drastic, it's a very drastic change and it's sometimes very scary and it plays into their education as well. So that's going to help take care of that piece too. So, and I can't think of a better place than Radford because Radford's near and dear to my heart. So thank you guys so much for collaborating and, and what you're bringing, the opportunities you're bringing our children. I appreciate it.
Ms. Pardon?
So one more time. Thank you guys for being here tonight. I know it's like, okay, how many more people are going to say that? And it sounds like everything has been said. I'm going to touch on the basis that I'm thrilled that it's a little closer because I know many students that were invited, mine as well, that just when they're involved in football and sports, they can't make that kind of time when they had to go to, you know, further schools to, to do the governor's school. So I appreciate the fact it's closer. And I do think, and just touched on the fact that it's opening up the campus for a lot of students that are very intimidated. And it kind of breaks that ice and, and helps them to kind of see that, you know, by the time they are ready to make that, whatever decision it is for the rest of their life, what profession they choose to go into, whether it's a trade, whether it's college education, they've been exposed to something differently. So I appreciate it. Thank you for all your time. Thank you for being here tonight.
I've got one question and then I'll, I'll let our students get involved as well. But I think I see the answer already in here, but I want to ask it in public because I've heard this question a few times. By students participating in this, that doesn't, doesn't preclude them from also being involved in activities at their school, right? So if they wanted to do, you know, the arts and they want to do marching band or perform in a choral concert or be in a, in a theater performance, right? As long as the schedules work out, right? I mean, that's, that's still possible, correct?
That's kind of why we wanted to do it in the morning to, to make sure that our students on campus to really take advantage of those extracurricular activities after school. And if I may too, one, one of the things that I forgot to say and maybe to help with Board Member Franklin's question too, is this, this is really unique too because it's one of the first governor's schools that I know of that we've reached out to businesses throughout the community to help us and support us and sponsor us too. So, you know, getting word out to the community may help get the word out to our, to our communities and families in our school divisions too, that, you know, this is very unique and, and really a new thing, so.
That's great. I saw Avi's hand up over there earlier. Did you have a question?
Yeah, so I think this is a really awesome idea as in Christiansburg, there's a lot of kids who want to pursue humanities or arts, however, there's not many opportunities. You have the Southwest Virginia Governor's School, which is only a, a science governor's school. So this is awesome for those kids. I have a question about the projects. So are these going to be like research projects where then they do a project and they eventually compete in the spring, summertime?
Avi, great question. I'm going to say once again, it depends. Because I'll, I'll use an example where we have a lot of students that do interdisciplinary research and we have on-campus level competitions, okay? We have other students that do participate in competitions that scale. So for example, we have a mock trial team that participates. And I do not know at this time if high schools are allowed to participate in that or if it's restricted to college students, but I'm expecting that they'll start getting involved in the mock trial. That is a group that goes to regional tournaments and then national tournaments. So there's the potential. I just don't know if high school students are able to compete at that level or not. So the opportunity will be there to practice with the team. Whether or not they can get pulled to competitions, I don't know yet. So we've got a whole range of opportunities where there are national level competitions to where there's just, I'll say, internal creativity projects like in the arts. So depends on the student's interest, depends on some of the rules of the competition. But hopefully, some of those will be allowed to participate in those bigger scale competitions.
Okay. Yeah. I also have another question. Can students join this like anytime? Like, could they join their junior year? Or is it kind of, they have to join their sophomore year and that's it?
So this is, it's a fair, very fair question. And that's probably the most common question that I've received because everybody's interested, well, you know, how does this work? At this time, we're, and this is really on my push, that we're only allowing sophomores to enter and then progress because we want to make sure, we know that if we start this with students entering their sophomore year and then kind of scaffold this, that the students will be successful. I'm not confident if we started a student just in their junior year or their senior year that they would. And I want to make sure to the parents in all of our, in our communities that if their student attends this, they will be successful. Once it's running for a couple of years, then we can start testing if it makes sense to let other students, if we've got that opportunity. But if a student comes in and we let them into their junior year or their senior year and it doesn't work, to me, that's, that, that's a failure of, of our program. So I'm, I'm trying to be really conservative with the rollout to make sure it's successful.
Yeah, yeah. I totally agree. Another question is, would you ever consider making this a four-year program or would you leave it as three?
I'm going to let the superintendent answer that one.
That, that, well, I think that's a wonderful question. That could potentially, that, that could really, a funding issue for public schools too. Because, you know, we, we receive ADM, so if we're graduating our students in the end of their sophomore or junior year like that too, it could have an impact on the ADM that we have there. So, you know, that's something that I think we could certainly talk about, but we would have to figure out the, the funding piece as far as public schools go too. Of course, this is not a, this is not any charge to any student who wants to be a part of this or apply to it too. And President Brett and the university are being very good about, we know the first year it may take a little bit of, of funding to help with it, but we're hoping that it'll be self-sustained into the future. So, you know, it's something that we can look at. I will think that a student who does go through the three years, and we are hoping those who apply will really stick to it and, and be with us the whole time, that they could be entering a college, they choose to go to college, they could be entering their college career at probably a, a second semester sophomore or even a, a first semester junior with all the credits that they're going to have. So it would save some money for the, for the student too.
Avi, I, I love your question though because, you know, what we've put together is a proposal that we're pretty confident will work, but we don't know what the future holds. So questions like yours, kind of pressing the envelope of what's possible, that's what we need to explore once we're up and running. So I love the question and that's, that's wonderful thinking about what could be possible in the future. I don't know, but until we kind of kick it around, that may be possible. We don't know. I don't, but I love the question.
Okay. And a question about the selection process. Would you guys try to keep it proportional as like 25% Christiansburg, 25% Blacksburg or something like that?
So we have, we have, we've, we've asked Montgomery County what they feel like their estimates would be. And I'm sure they're giving their estimates based upon the four high schools that are in Montgomery County too. And then we've also asked the other high schools that are within the New River Valley too to give us the estimates. And that's kind of what we're, we're looking for. But we're, we're trying to be as equitable as possible across the region, considering the size of the schools as well. Really good question there too.
Okay. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions.
Any other student questions? Any other board questions?
So I have one that Avi just spurred in me. So if you have students who are coming in and they get to their junior year and they decide, this is not for me. And then all of a sudden, your class of possibly 20 students goes down to 10 students. Would there be an opportunity at that point for another student who has shown interest to join the program in their junior year?
So that's one of those items that I think we're going to have to run this through a full cycle. So get a sophomore student prepped up through their senior year and kind of graduated before we can look at that. And again, the, the concern is until we make sure that those students are all tracking successfully through the program, it's kind of a risk to experiment, bringing in a student that hasn't been socialized on campus because it hasn't had those accelerated learning classes on campus. Is it possible, just like with Avi's question, I think it's possible. I, I think we need to consider it, but that first cycle, I, I really want us to get through that first before we start considering other opportunities to bring in students, I'm going to call it off-cycle. And, you know, I, I think the way that we're trying to set up the standards for the students coming in to be successful, it might be where those students that are going to come in at the sophomore year, I'm sorry, at the junior year, at the senior year, the standards are different because they have to be better-prepared students to be able to have missed that year and still be successful. So it is, it is a very fair question. I'm just not confident we can do that yet. It's kind of like that, it's kind of like that future. It's, it's possible, but we just got to make sure it's going to work first.
That's a question that the committee's gotten a lot.
Yeah.
And felt like that, you know, through the application process, the interviews possibly in orientation, that we can help the first group at least understand how important it is that they make a commitment to try to stay and be with us as long as possible.
Any other questions, board? Do you still have anything? Okay, great. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Dr. Kevin Kastner and Dr. Wayne Harris with BWP and Associates will present to the board about the superintendent search process.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Graham. Dr. Kastner and I express our gratitude for your selection of us to assist you as you make a decision, maybe the most important decision that you make as a board in the selection of your next superintendent. We are grateful to have the opportunity to work with you. And we pledge that every action we take, every thing that we do to assist you, it will be sincere effort. It will be with high intention based on what we hear you, the members of this community say you want us to look for as we are reviewing the applicants who apply for this position. We cannot overstate how grateful we are to have this opportunity. Because this opportunity, if my clicker works, the opportunity to work with you as you are making a decision about who your next superintendent is allows us to expand the success that Dr. Kastner and I have realized over the course of the last 14 or 15 years that we've been doing searches together. As you can see, we have done a number of searches. The list in front of you simply highlights the searches that we've completed over the last five years. And the word success means that the superintendents who were selected have done very well in those districts. And that is our goal, is to provide candidates from whom you will select your next superintendent who will be here, longevity. A superintendent that you select who will engage, who will encourage, and who will empower. They will do that through working with teachers, principals, the staff and community because that highlights what you say in your strategic plan. I won't belabor this, but Dr. Kastner and I come to you as the BWP search team. Together, we bring right at 25 years of experience in the superintendent position. We have worked together 14, 15 years doing searches. We have worked together doing strategic planning. Dr. Kastner is familiar with Montgomery County because he has spent time here as an interim. I am familiar because I live near here and I've done some work with you in the past. And so again, we are grateful and we come with experience and we pledge that we will do our very best. We want you to keep in mind the objectives that we have. We will tailor the process to your needs. We will identify candidates that match what you tell us you want us to look for that will come from the community engagement process, which Dr. Kastner will explain in just a moment. Because we want to make sure that the matching fit Because we want to make sure that the match and fit is what will allow Montgomery to go to the next level. We will present those candidates to you and you will make the decision of who you interview. Because the school board is the decision-maker. Dr. Kastner and I are facilitators and we make recommendations. So as we move forward, let's clarify the role that we will play. These are the objectives. We will present to you tonight in more detail and depth the process that supports and helps the board find the best candidates for your superintendent position. We will spend time creating community and staff support for the search by involving individuals from throughout this community, sharing with us responses to several questions. And all of that information, along with a online survey, will allow us to draft the leadership profile that you will approve. We will aggressively recruit high-quality candidates. Be assured, we don't have some list of people already we know. We will recruit, we will only be bringing forward after scanning and looking at the applicant pool, those candidates that meet and fit, but they must apply. And finally, we will assure you that we will complete the search within the board's timeline, within your budget, and within the expectations. Dr. Kastner Wright will now come before you and he will spend time going into some detail about the steps in the process. He will then be asking you to respond to several questions related to the vacancy announcement, related to the timeline, related to the profile, et cetera. And you have those materials in front of you.
Go ahead and click. Good evening, board members. Dr. Graham. We're delighted to be here. We were here last week, but this meeting's different. This meeting is a kickoff. We're now trying to work with the board to get your direction. We're gonna go through this in a pretty deliberate way. We're gonna ask the board chair to help us, uh, get that type of direction as we begin the work that we'll have for the next several months. First off, this whole process in which you're involving a search firm to work with your community is how a board trusts your community. By asking us to get involved, talk to the members of your community, tell you what they're saying, and put everything down with your expertise and their expertise to lead a, create a leadership profile. Now, as we're getting into this, engaging the community is of paramount importance. Not only to have this be a team effort with the board and the community, but also as someone would come in, they will need to partner with these same types of people to create a continuity, to build upon good things that are here, but also to get it to the next level. Again, with, with that partnership between the board and the superintendent. Experience and skills that you wanna have in your next superintendent, you have a high bor- a bar here. It's not a place where someone can come in and this maybe is their first time and they learn on the job. Your standards are high. This is typically true in a place that has a university community. It's true with the track record you've had over the years. We will need to create a leadership profile and we're gonna explain how we're gonna have that be data-driven. And we're gonna need to get some approval for the vacancy announcements and also, uh, getting to the point of how the timeline works. Next slide, please. As part of the community engagement process, uh, well, first off, let me, let me take you to the sheet that was in your folder that talks about key decisions. And I wanna start, before I get into specifications more, I wanna start with the timeline. Now, the timeline that you have here for board members that already have this sheet, but also for members of the public. The goal here is to be able to complete the interview and a selection of your next superintendent before winter break. So that negotiations could occur after that and we could have some transition time to get someone onboard as soon as possible. The reason for that is you're gonna be part of a budget process. Um, while you have a very capable interim superintendent, we're gonna be thinking about that transition time too. So in regard to the calendar, is the board comfortable with trying to make sure we can backward map and get everything done, let's say by December 20th? Is that something that we're in agreement on?
It's a good starting point, board. Any, any comments or thoughts on that?
Okay, that's, that's the first thing.
No, no, wait. I was just trying to give somebody else a chance.
Excuse me?
So for me, uh, I would love to see a superintendent in place before the end of the year. But it also means the candidates that are put forth to us, if they are of the caliber, that we can choose someone to be. And if we need to go longer than that, I wanna make sure we have the right person versus looking at the calendar.
Here's our pledge to you. We're gonna present candidates to you in December. If the board is not satisfied with the count, the candidate pool, then you're gonna tell us to go back to work. Now, I've never had that happen, but the truth is, we don't want you to compromise. And that's what you're trying to say. So we have that flexibility. We also have a couple things that are variables. Whether someone's a sitting superintendent, you don't want them to leave badly. But also, it's a point of trying to work towards that transition. There are some certain things that'll just have to, as we get information, we just need to work with the board so you can make the best possible decision. But we don't want you to compromise in any way. So we're okay on the calendar, right? So as we're working on that, then we're getting to the point, we're gonna need to have a community engagement process, which would be two full days. You're gonna find that we're gonna need your help with staff where we have an outline of community engagement potential stakeholders. You as a board need to figure out if that list is correct when the staff gives you the ones that we're trying to do. And also, students, I want you to know that we want to take the time to interview the students in each of the high schools. How the principals choose who those students are, we'd like to have it be representative of the entire student body. Also, we want the students involved in the survey, the answers that you give on the survey. And we're gonna be asking you to try to get as many students, I'd like to see four, 500, participate in the survey. And the information that you give, we will compare it to what everybody else in the community is going to give. So we're gonna need your help on that. And in that process, as we're engaging internal and external, we wanna be able to have that, particularly the parents, the leaders in your businesses, your city, your county government, all of that. So in developing this, and I had the opportunity, uh, both working with Tosh today and also your communications person. This is a blank grid that gives us probably 36 different times that we can do over two days and have open forums in four of the different areas in the evening where anybody in the community can attend. So we need to work to develop this, find a way how to communicate it best, and try to garner the greatest amount of participation as we can. So in doing this, you need to understand, we're gonna stick to three questions. And board members, you're gonna be the first ones, we're gonna ask these three questions. We will interview you before we come in for the, uh, two-days community engagement. Uh, we're gonna ask you, what are the greatest strengths of Montgomery County schools? What are some of the challenges Montgomery County schools or community are facing? And what are the qualities and characteristics you'd like to see in the next superintendent? Now, these questions are somewhat open-ended, but we'll be asking the same questions. And when we meet with stakeholders or even the forums, we will try to read back the answers so that these are definitely representative of your words. Now, in doing that, we don't, when we meet with all the board members, we do a composite. We don't go into this individual or that individual. So there is a confidentiality that we definitely would wanna honor both ways to so we can get the best type of information we'd like to have. So in addition, when we're talking about planning for the community engagement in which you're gonna end up signing off, at the same time, we're gonna be having a survey. And the survey, which we will have available through your system's website, and we're looking for over a thousand responses, is going to ask questions about what are the qualities and characteristics people would like to see in their next superintendent. Some people wanna do a little bit more than just sign off and say, I want this quality or this characteristic. And they have the opportunity with my email address to send it to me. And we will also give them the opportunity to go in things that are a little bit more detailed. But one of the things, when we talk about the three questions, we wanna keep this around the three questions. We aren't in, into getting into this issue or that issue. We wanna stick to the superintendent search. In doing that, you're gonna have, we're gonna meet with over 200 people. We'll have community engagement questions, over a thousand. It will give us the type of information that is gonna assist the board in getting into the leadership profile, of which we will recommend to you. The other thing that we will do, we will present a report to you that's public record, that will go onto your website, that will have what we've recorded on what everybody has said and what was on the survey. So we try to work on that to make it as transparent as possible for those people that have an interest. So that's the community engagement process. And so in doing that, and having all this stuff posted on the website, that becomes part of the process. This'll probably happen in the next three, four weeks. And we'll have the, uh, the two days. And it's a matter right now of planning. Timeline on it's pretty good. As long as we get this done, I think by the, uh, middle of October, we'll be able to be consistent with that. And also, it's the information that your candidates are, is gonna wanna look at. So this gets into the community engagement strategies, how this is all works. Next, uh, slide, please. Getting into the recruitment, one of the things we're gonna wanna do is you're gonna have to have an announcement. Now, I have already shared with staff, you can have a one-page announcement, like we have here an example in Rockingham that was in the folder. Or you could look at the announcement in Stanton, that when you look at it in color, it gets into a little bit of marketing, because you're trying to attract people. And it's the type of thing that will end up in our national advertisements that we have. And also the fact that it'll be on the BWP website. But you're gonna need to sign off on that as board members. You're gonna need to sign off on the survey. So we'll be asking, uh, we'll be asking staff to help us get to that point where then whatever process you wanna use as the board chair, we can get into that. Okay? And let's talk about advertisement. You have a choice. Well, first, this is a national search. While it's a national search, probably two-thirds of our applicants are gonna be from Virginia. But still, you're looking for somebody that even might be in a different place. You've hired people that aren't from Virginia, a lot of systems do. But when you do this nationally, you have to decide whether you wanna spend 60 days to do the advertisement or 30 days. My recommendation is you consider 30 days. If you wanna go, the most robust way you go, it would be up to probably $2,900 or you can pay half of that. Right now, I'd ask the board's direction, whether you would agree with my recommendation or you would like to go with the 60 days, which is just fine. But, um, it's your call.
Yeah, thanks. Let's, um, let's pause there. Kinda covered a lot of ground there. Um, if there are any other questions or comments from the board on anything thus far, but, but let's definitely get some direction on, on the 30 or 60-day piece. Yeah, I heard some, yeah.
Yeah, so are you, you want that answer right now or, uh?
If possible, but I'm not gonna tell you, we have to have it tonight. But we'd like to know, again, you're giving us direction, what are your thoughts?
I don't know. Um, I'd like to hear from my other, uh, board members. I did wanna return to, um, the, the calendar that you have. I, if I'm reading this correctly, you wanna have individual meetings with all of us within the next two weeks? Is that correct?
Yes. We'll, we'll do it by phone.
Okay, you're gonna, okay. So, uh, yeah, I'd like to hear from my other board members. I think one of the things I'm wondering is, uh, uh, Chair Hudson, we've got a, a lot on our agenda this evening. And so I'm wondering what, so some of this we, we had during the, I'm sorry, to be direct here. Um, during the presentation, I'm wondering if we can focus on the information that, um, you need from us, cause I think this is the planning meeting, right? That you're having?
This is a meeting where we would like to see if you have, can give us board direction. And, and what I'm trying to do is there's some choices here.
Yeah.
And first off, on the calendar, we, we got that. When you talk about that you're gonna be, also give input to staff on stakeholders, we have that. And then the issue, one of these other things is the advertisement of if you are comfortable with 30 or 60 days. We don't have to have that answer tonight, but if we could have it, fine. If you'd wanna take a little longer, we're not gonna, we wouldn't be doing the advertisements for at least two or three weeks anyway. So it's up to you.
Okay, great. I'd like to hear from some other people who've gone through this process before.
I'm gonna suggest 30-day. I'm sure you guys are much more familiar with, and that's your recommendation. I support what you think.
I am fine with the 30-days as well. I've only been through one superintendent search, but I feel like, um, the board knows that we, this is kind of an urgent matter for us. And with your recommendation and with your expertise, if that's what you are recommending, um, I'm good with that.
Okay, so this is my fifth. And I think everybody knows, just cause somebody recommends something doesn't mean I'm gonna be okay with it. So is there a middle ground? Can we do 45 days instead of 60 days?
The pricing is on 30-day windows.
Okay.
Although you need to understand, the BWP website and some of the other work, i- it's up all the time. Also, the same thing with the Virginia, Virginia School Board and Superintendent Association. We aren't, those are free. So it isn't that there isn't other information out there all the time.
Okay, so in other words, information can be out there. And we can say at 45 days, we're closing our acceptance of applications and?
When we have the announcement, we will have a cut date. But we'll wanna make sure that the advertisements are on the front end of that before the cut date. And so the cut date is towards the end of November. We'd have the advertisements done probably more towards the middle of November. We'd probably do like an, if we did the 30, like an October 15th to a November 15th.
Okay. Okay, so, um, right now, I'll be honest, I am not ready to give my, uh, answer to 30 or 60 days. One of the things I haven't seen is the timeline that was developed today as far as meeting with, uh, community members and what that looks like, uh, for me, cause I want to make sure. Because I want to make sure, because we have talked about, two days may not be enough. I, you know, what, what was developed that I don't know about right now, so?
Well, here's, and this is a process. In regard to the stakeholders and what the two days might mean, if it got to a point where you had more stakeholders than we were able to handle in two days, I think I mentioned that to the board. If we extended it, it doesn't that costly to extend. But the goal here is to make this customized for you. And we're fine with that. There's some flexibility there. The other thing is that we've found, sometimes even in the work we do, when we can do it virtual, we can get more inclusion. And if we can make that available for people, we can do that too. So a lot of these things, we don't know the, we don't need the answers. You want to see some of that in front of you, which you should, we're fine with that. Whether we do 30 or 60, we do not have to answer tonight, but that was one of the things we wanted to put there. As we go, which I'm going to table that for right now. But the next issue that we want to discuss is the decision that the board needs to make, whether you want to do an open search or you want to do a confidential search. Now, I know you've talked about this before. We recommend a confidential search. We think we can maximize the pool. But there are pluses and minuses on either one, and it gets to the point, it's the will of the board. So there isn't anything more that I need to say about this. It's pretty much now, if the board could give us some direction. Now, this is one, it would be very helpful to get the direction, because this is going to impact the announcement, because people are going to want to know. And whatever, whatever decision you make, this is the first thing candidates are going to ask us. Would you, would you agree, Dr. Harris?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, board, so that is the decision we should try to make tonight. Who else has thoughts?
Can you speak to the pros and cons of the two options?
When we do searches in South Carolina where the three applicants' names become public by law, our number, our pools are smaller. In Virginia, where Virginia has a choice, probably 90% of the searches are closed because it can maximize the pool. When you're in a strong school system, you're in a system that has high expectations, you're in a university community, I think it's very important to try to maximize the number of people with superintendent experiences. If you do a closed search, you can do that.
The downside of an open search is that there will be some superintendents who will not apply, knowing that their name would be out there. They'll have difficulty going back to their district if they don't get the job. So that reduces the number of superintendents. When it comes to deputy superintendents, assistant superintendents, or other high-level, executive-level administrators, it's not the same issue. So it's really the downside is you'll have fewer superintendents who are willing to risk having their name out there, not knowing that they'll get the job.
I'd like to go back to the 30, 60-day window discussion and just to get some clarification from you. I mean, when you start posting this ad, there, people, people are looking, right? They're looking for new opportunities to advance, to move, whatever. Do you feel like in your experience that 30 days is probably enough to capture people who would be looking at, at the ads?
The reason is, all superintendents are going to read ED Week. They normally, AAS, they look at it on a regular basis. So your sitting superintendents, that's pretty much their go-to, and they're going to see it in that cycle. You know, obviously, if you go to 60 days, you're going to maximize it a little bit more. But in my experience, I haven't seen that much of a difference in the candidate pool where the week go 30 or 60 days when we're talking about the districts we've worked in in Virginia. Now, there's other places in the larger districts that will make a difference when we do, Chicago, where we do Metropolitan, Madison, then that's going to be more national. But for this, I think our recommendation is not going to hurt the participation in the candidate pool.
Is it worthwhile to advertise at the Administrator and School Board Associations for like our border states? Those are with, would Education Week or some of the national publications probably capture that?
I think what we have has enabled us to have pretty, pretty good candidate pools. And, you know, we've done some recent searches. You know, we just did, we did Spasylvania, we did Stanton, and we've had pretty good, we've had good pools. So, and again, that is also, people know BWP. There are other search firms out there too. But we do have a pretty good reputation that people will look at us. This isn't quite the ideal time of the year, it'd be better two or three months from now, but this does work, and I don't see any problem with that.
Boarding opinions on open versus closed?
Well, I've always, in all our superintendent searches, feel like a closed is best, just because I do agree 100% if someone's looking at a fear if it's open, they're not going to. And I think we could lose a lot of potential. And I think someone who could be a sitting superintendent that may want to change, that may, looking for a different venue, a different, you know, goal, they're going to be less likely to take that step if they think it's open and they're going to come back. So I, I personally, and all our other superintendent searches that I've been involved in, I've always felt the same thing. Whether we've had them, whether we've not, I still support it having it closed, because I think people like that privacy. And there'll come a point when it will be open. But in the beginning, to get, to get that pool interested, to get names, to get people coming in, I think we need to go with a confidentiality piece.
Question on that, you said there will come a time when it becomes open. What did you mean by that?
Once it gets to the end, after there's, say you have two or three, isn't it usually, no, okay, well, I'm fine with that too.
A confidential search, the public would only know your final decision.
Let's keep going around, getting thoughts. Ms. Spartan?
Yes, so I'm going to go with closed, just per what Ms. Bond said, but what you all are saying too. I feel like we would probably have a more applicable amount of candidates and definitely ones that would apply that might not if they thought their current job might be in jeopardy. And just, I think it would make the candidate feel a little bit more, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but, yeah, probably, just so many reasons. Was Bernie a closed? Okay, so Ms. Bond referred to closed candidates for other superintendent searches. And I just think that gives the candidates the comfort of knowing. And it, and it definitely, to me, would seem more appealing if I was a superintendent looking for another position. I would definitely be looking at those closed positions before I would probably even think about looking at the open, open ones.
Dr. Gitcher?
I'm still thinking through it, because I believe in one of the other presentations, they talked about being confidential until you got to the finalists for the position. Is that not a route? Or will it have the same chilling effect as it being open from the beginning?
I've done three searches in South Carolina within the last year. Our applicant pool is less, because the rule is the three finalists have to be out there. And these were in large systems. One was Oregon, you know, that's 50,000. The other two were over 25,000. And in order to attract the top superintendents, we did not have the same quality, but we did have some strong candidates. But we had less than we did in, let's say, Prince William County here in Virginia that was a confidential search, the candidate pool was significantly larger. So when you're in, so you're in a larger school system, and you're trying to find that potential superintendent experience. If this was a system that was smaller, the competition changes. You know, the average school system's only 4,000. And again, we're here to explain the pluses and minuses, but it's your call.
If it's the majority of the boards in favor of confidentiality, it doesn't make sense to me. On the earlier question about the advertising, in my world, 30 days is like the shortest you would advertise, so 45, even though there, you know, we would be paying for the extra, makes sense. But absence of having a calendar and knowing when you're going to cut off that window for people to apply, you know, it's hard to make a hard and fast decision on that. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay, so we keep talking about looking for sitting superintendents. This is my fifth search. Only during one of those searches was there a sitting superintendent. I think you all even acknowledged at one point, you all had to be the superintendent for your first term too. And I think you all think you were good superintendents, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I don't know that, you know, heavily looking for a sitting superintendent is a huge priority. It's always a plus, but there are a lot of good folks out there who have led our district who were not sitting superintendents. So for me, traditionally in our community, we have had it open so that we bring in our choice of candidates to interact with community so that they can meet them, they can hear them. And that's where I am at, is that it's open. So our community is engaged in the beginning, and they're engaged at the end, even though it is the board's final decision. That's where I'm at, open.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, so I've pondered this significantly. The, the, the most like, or the best way to get the largest pool of applicants is for a closed search. We have history in this county of superintendents going and interviewing elsewhere and coming back to cold shoulders from the community and the board. So it is definitely noteworthy to say that you are going to have less superintendents, sitting superintendents, applying for the jobs, which decreases the applicant pool. Whether there are people that are not sitting superintendents that are better than the sitting superintendents that are going to apply, that's to be decided in the applicant phase. But we want to maximize the high-quality people applying to the jobs. Now, that being said, we have to do an excellent job on the front end of getting the community input on what they're looking for, for a superintendent. Because once we have that input, if we're, if it's a closed search, they're putting their trust in us to fulfill their desires based on that input. Speaking to the 30 days, since I didn't talk about it, it looks like the calendar that is proposed to us is that applications would be due November 22nd. So if we back that out, you're talking about October 22nd to start a 30-day advertisement. If you could put together the, well, you, you've already said you can put together the profile that you're going to be looking for by that time, because you're going to, by mid-October, where we only have 30 days to advertise if we're looking for closing the application process at the end of November, so that then we can have selection. You're reviewing the candidates, bringing candidates forth to us at the beginning of December. Well, it gives a couple of weeks, I mean, 30 days, just, I don't think there's time for 60 days if you're going to try it.
It would be a little tough. We, our goal, and again, was listening to when you did your RFP, was trying to get this done by the end of January, which you're trying to, to see how soon you could get someone to report. It's a little tight, but as we're dealing with the whole idea of winter break or Christmas holidays, you have to stop right there around December 20th to be able to get your meetings in. It can be done, but again, I've given you the pros and cons.
Yeah, so I think 30 days in a closed search is kind of where I'm, I'm sitting at with those.
Ms. Brazil?
I'm probably going to echo a lot of what Dr. Roundtree said and going on your expert opinion, because you have done, done this before, and it's your recommendation to, to us. It seems like 30 days for advertising is, is sufficient, especially if it's, if it's our timeline that we're trying to get someone, get someone in. Advertising for longer makes that a little more complicated. And I absolutely agree that it seems as if having the search closed creates a more robust pool, which means that we have a higher, a bigger pool with candidates that would be a better fit. But then that puts the onus, I think, on us and to direct you to have really, really good community engagement on the front end. So maybe looking beyond two days, depending on how, how stakeholder groups flesh out and that kind of thing.
Now, I'll just add my thoughts as well. You know, I, I felt strongly in the last search that I felt we needed a sitting superintendent. And so I was fine with how that search unfolded. You know, I don't feel as strongly of this go-around that we necessarily need a sitting superintendent, but I do, I do want to maximize our pool, right? So we've got the best candidates to pick from as possible. And clearly, a closed search will, will accomplish that. I definitely agree with, with what Dr. Roundtree said. So then that means it's incumbent upon us to read that community feedback, you know, that, that we get from you guys, process that and make sure that we're, we're, we're meeting those expectations, right? If you bring in somebody that doesn't meet those expectations, as you said, that information is going to be public, right? So the public is going to know what they told us, right? And if we go a different direction, that's going to reflect on us, right? So I'm comfortable with that process. I'm comfortable with the closed search and the 30-day timeline as well, just to kind of meet. But I did just want to, I think everybody has found this, but there's, there's a draft timeline in our packet here. And while most of those dates are just kind of ranges, you guys did mention a couple of specific dates in here that you've been referring to in terms of the applications due and, and I guess, I guess that was really the only firm date, maybe February 1st kind of deal, so. Okay, any other comments, board, on any of that?
Yeah. Can I just add one thing? I think when, once you do the community engagement, how much time do you need or do you take to, to, to prepare the report? That's the basis for the advertising, because one of the things that, I, I note that, that date for, for closing, but I wasn't sure this and because?
We will have the report, but we'd hope beginning of November. We usually need a week turnaround to do the data, and that'll be fine for candidates, because they won't, they won't have completed their application yet, they're finishing yet.
Okay.
So the community engagement, let's say, we, let's just say hypothetically, we did that by October 15th. We'd like to present the report at a formal board meeting before the end of October. And we, and we can make that turnaround, we will make that turnaround work.
So will you be posting the job description, the job ad before you're done with the report?
We are going to propose it tomorrow morning.
Where the community engagement meshes with the advertising?
Yeah, there'll be, first off, the name, our site, we will post. And then what it does, information will be following. And that information, we'll see the announcement. And then the next thing, they'll see the product of the leadership profile, And then the next thing, they'll see the product of the leadership profile, which the board will do and hopefully have it accomplished by the beginning of November. Cause when we get to vetting candidates, we will be asking them to explain how you match and fit the leadership profile.
Okay.
And with that timeline, it, it comes in stages, so to speak.
Okay.
But we can pull that off.
Great, so what goes into the, the posting itself, like what information is it?
The examples you have at the very back of the handout. You saw the example in Stanton, you saw the example, I believe, in Rockingham. Two, two ways, uh, there's two things with the profile. Basic information, people just really wanna see that if in order to do this, you're gonna have to have a license in Virginia. You're going to have to apply through BWP, you're gonna, this is your deadline. Your, your vacancy announcement, this is what you're gonna end up having to do. And all that kinda begins the process. And it's, it's a marketing thing for people.
So you could do that before the end of September, is that what you?
We're gonna have that up within a week.
Okay, so that was what I was wondering about in terms of the.
Once staff will give you a draft for your approval, we'd like to try to get that so that we can get it out there. And then we also use that to drive the advertisements.
Right, so that would be like the 45, well, I was thinking the 40, was wondering about it being more than 30 days, because it did come up in the presentation that, that community piece does not feed into the advertisement. The advertisement goes out beforehand, so that's just what I wanted to.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Once the advertisement, once the vacancy announcement goes out, we will start to have people contact us to say, when will the leadership profile? Those individuals will already have checked out Montgomery County Public Schools, the school board. They will have gone on your board docs, they have watched meetings, they've done their research. And so the period of recruiting is longer than the 30 days. The 30 days is the national announcement, if you will. But it's already open, once that vacancy announcement hits, we'll have calls. In fact, I've already had two people call and say, when, when is this search gonna begin? So peo, the word is already out. And, and there are other ways that the vacancy is announced, not just through the national publications. The Harvard Job Board, I'm connected there. I call and say, here's the announcement, can you spread it to all the folks who came through the Urban Superintendents Program? The Virginia Tech School Leaders Institute, Aspiring Supes Program. Individuals who've come through that program, we've had over 250. So we spread the word, even though the national announcement in Edweek and the other publications is 30 days. The announcement is far more days than just 30.
Avi, did you have a question?
I have a question, uh, are there really even any downsides to a closed search?
You will have folks in the public who say, I deserve to know what's going on. I wanna know who they are, but I would say the public already has an opportunity to say what you want us to look for. So they're engaged at the beginning, and we use that information to determine it from the pool who match and fits.
Okay.
That's a good question, and the issue is, and I think in this day and age, everybody would like to be involved in a process where they could actually, uh, see some of the choices. But in the end, you have a board that's elected. And since that is their job as an elected board through that, if they hired the right people to be on the board, there should be a trust there. But there will be people that definitely will have the sentiment that they'd like to be able to weigh in on that.
Okay.
But the board gets to choose, not the public. You're choosing on behalf of the public.
Board, any other questions or comments so far? What's next?
Well, I, is it, does the board in a position to, tonight, to tell us your decision on, uh, open or confidential on the search?
I think the majority said closed, yeah.
Okay, now, let's go on to the next step, next slide please.
Did you have something, Dr. Roundtree, I'm sorry?
Oh yeah, I mean, there, there was also a question at some point. Not a ask for what we're doing, but what kind of, uh, advertisement we want. We want kinda that full color page advertisement versus a, a bunch of text.
Truth is, you have a right, you will see that. I can guarantee you, I already talked with some of your staff, I, I am under the impression that, uh, is it Andrew? I, I think he wants to, uh, do an excellent job giving you something you're gonna be proud of, which gets me right into my next slide, please.
Alright, sounds good, thanks.
See, the one thing, Montgomery County, your reputation helps us. We're gonna have a good pool. And so it isn't whether you have the spiffiest advertisement in the world, if you don't have a strong system, it, it just doesn't work together, but when you do a combination of a little bit of both, all this type of thing is gonna help us with this. And also the fact that the openness of the process that you had last week and even what we're doing here tonight, candidates are already interviewing, looking at you, see how you behave as a board, and, and all of this. It works better in places that, uh, how you've been representing yourself, because in some districts, not everything is going quite as smoothly. So all this gets into the fact when we're getting into what we do of trying to find that. Next slide, please. Now, the one thing, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the assessment, cause we are, definitely take that seriously. We'll be vetting, we want no surprises. But in the end, we're gonna come back to you after probably the first week in December. And we're gonna have a candidate pool. And as we meet with the board, we're gonna give you a protocol document, which talks about the do's and don'ts of how you do interviews, talk about questions you can't ask, give you some sample questions based on your profile. And actually, so you don't have to reinvent it, give you some choices that you can make when you're getting ready to do your interviews. Also the fact we would give a different set of questions to recommend to you for the second round. And then we would be presenting the information we have of the people that we would be recommending to you. It's your choice. And in doing that, and we talked about this, uh, last week, we would be happy to tell a little bit more about the client pool, so that you can see how we got down to the choice in a rubric way, where we have people that, um, maybe don't even come close of the others that maybe might be our last 10 or 15, and tell you a little bit more information with that. But the ones that we recommend, we are guaranteeing that we'll stand behind it for two years and do the search over at cost. So this is a detail that we could probably talk to you individually when we do our interviews, if you'd like to know more. I would just tell you that, um, the type of information we give is to put you in a position that you're gonna be comfortable in that. And also the, the fact that you'll have access to the biggest decision you'll end up making, and whether you want it in a notebook or you wanna do it in a Dropbox. We'll go whatever way the board is comfortable with it. But if it comes in a notebook, it stays in central office, it doesn't go home. So we're trying to protect that confidentiality. So the other things as far as what we needed to do today, you've given us everything we need. Now, we need your help on input for the community engagement. We say that if you need more time, we'll find a way to make it work. We need you to sign off on the announcement, we need you to sign off on the, uh, the, on the, uh, survey. And, and that's about it. So we got a lot done here. And again, I feel very comfortable in working with staff, there's gonna be a team. We also, in, in working with your superintendent, uh, she'll help coordinate all that process. Wayne, we got something? Okay, we're getting into the vetting, and, and the thing we keep saying is match and fit. Match and fit. And we've already talked about the timeline. And this is you. This concludes our presentation. You've given us what we need, is there anything else that you would like of us now?
In terms of the things that, that we owe you, not, not necessarily tonight, but like the community engagement planning and stuff like that. I guess, just trying to think out loud, the, the most effective way to get that to you is, are we gonna get recommendations from anyone on that, or are we just on our own?
We'd like to work with staff. But in the end, it's gonna be, have to be signed off by the board. What the goal would be is they give you a draft schedule.
Roger.
See how it's gonna work, even to make sure that if we're gonna do the evening forums, do we wanna do it in the, uh, four high schools, in the, in the geographic areas, whatever you think works. And also the fact that we want to work within your existing protocols. When you end up having a survey, do you do it in multiple languages? Although I heard today you have another process that can create access where people can have the ability to have anything translated, which we haven't seen before, but I thought that was pretty neat. But, but again, we talked with staff today, we've given them a thumb drive, it has a lot of examples and things. And, uh, we're look, really looking forward now with the direction you've given us this evening, is just getting to work. And that we do, and, and we will see you then when we, and when you, someone asked, can board members come to a forum? Sure. We don't think it's wise to participate, but you have the right to be there. Do they come to the individual stakeholder meetings? We'd suggest not. We would, it, sometimes that might chill the audience just a little bit, having someone else in there. But a- again, that's just our recommendation.
Board, any other questions or comments?
So can we review exactly what was agreed upon tonight?
This is what I think I heard. I heard that there was a agreement that we would go with a 30-day window on the advertisement. I heard there is an agreement that you'd like to have the, uh, possible, the candidates selected by the end of, by the winter break. I heard that there was an agreement on confidentiality. I think the board heard we're gonna need their help in signing off on the survey, on the announcement, and also the final organization of the, uh, community engagement process. And if that entails, we need to look at it to make sure we meet your needs, and we have to be a little flexible beyond what we just shared with you, um, then we'll work with you. But when it comes to dates and everything, it's gonna have to come back to you all to see if it works in your schedules too. Did I miss anything, Ms. Franklin?
No, I just wanted to make sure, because some of those things I did, I didn't agree upon, and we're saying the board agreed upon.
Well, let's just say this, I never really have worked with a board member who's been through five searches, so I do value your thoughts. I appreciate them.
Any other questions or concerns?
So I do have one question for the board, and, and this came up in our conversation earlier, so, um, these guys didn't ask, but, at least in, in public, but in terms of the coordination between them and the board, typically that would be through the board chair. And I'm certainly happy to do that if, if that's the will of the board, but realizing I'm in a bit of a lame duck position here. And if the search continues in past December, um, I just wanna make sure there's some continuity with whatever happens next, so. If the, the board wanted to maybe have me and someone else as a, as the point of contact, did the board rather have somebody else as the point of contact? You know, we can, we can do whatever we want to here. I don't want to assume I am the point of contact without the board's, uh, the board's decision on that. Any thoughts on that?
I, I think, um, by the time we get to the, the end of December, the end of your term, then we will have been through the majority of these administrative matters. So in terms of, I'm, I'm not too worried about continuity, because at that point, we'll be at a, hopefully, we'll be at a different stage. So even if there is some delay, hopefully we'll have a candidate, but if not, we'll be near the end, where it sounds like there's, there's gonna be a fair amount of upfront work at this stage, I'm.
I, I wanna just ask you, the, the only additional thing that the board will need to be actively involved in is the negotiations. And at that point, you're right, after you get involved with your interviews and selection, at that point, the bridge of who the contact person would be, because that in the end, when you take your final vote in January, it will have to be with the successful negotiations. And at that point, I think if you work towards it, you'd have the transition there if you have a leadership change. Cause there will be a new, there'll be a new chair.
Yeah, I think keeping the vice chair on email copy would be a reasonable compromise, but for phone calls, just directly to you would be good.
Any other thoughts on that, does that sound good?
Great, I'll be happy to include the vice chair.
Awesome, thank you both gents for being here.
Thank you.
Alright. But we've been through a lot already, is everybody good? Keep going, do we need a break? Everybody, good play? Okay. Alright, great, next up, Sarah Rupp, our Vice President of the MCEA, will present an update from the Montgomery County Education Association. I do wanna thank you for being patient tonight, we had, uh, only had two agenda items before you, but they were pretty hefty, so.
It's okay, thank you guys so much for having me, sorry. Good evening, Chair Hudson, Dr. Graham, and members of the school board and our student representatives. My name is Sarah Rupp, and I'm an English teacher at Blacksburg High School and the new Vice President of the MCEA. I would like to thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present to you a report on behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association. First, I would like to thank the board for your continued support for collective bargaining. Your support made it possible for all MCPS employees to begin the 25, 26 school year with active collective bargaining agreements in place for all employee groups. This is a huge win for all employees and for MCPS as a whole, as it sets us apart from other school districts in our area and shows that MCPS is a place that respects and supports its employees. As we now have three contracts to manage, there is sure to be some growing pains as we work with the administration to make sure that all work requirements are in alignment with the CBAs. We appreciate your support during this time of transition as we collaborate with administrators to bring all working conditions into alignment with the contracts. Just as a reminder, the collective bargaining agreement for certified staff will expire in January 2026. Our MCA team has already been collecting information from staff regarding renegotiations for this CBA. And we will be reaching out to the MCPS administration very soon to begin scheduling those negotiation meetings. I'm gonna be the collective bargaining chair for this round of negotiations, and I look forward to helping with this important process. Secondly, we would like to thank the board for their timely and considerate appointment of Dr. Graham as interim superintendent. We would like to extend our congratulations to Dr. Graham, and we look forward to working collaboratively together. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to address the board at this time, and we look forward to continuing this type of open communication. Thank you Chair Hudson and fellow school board members. Are there any questions that I can answer for you now?
Board, any questions or comments?
Given the presentation that we just had about our superintendent search, what would be some good ways to engage with staff to make sure that you all feel like you're heard as we start this process?
I personally think that making sure that the survey is extended to all of the staff of all employee groups, including, uh, you know, certified and other personnel, I, I think that's very important. I also would be curious about, specifically wondering about any candidate's experience with collective bargaining. And, you know, it'd be nice to know where they stand on it as well, but, uh, most importantly, have they worked alongside a strong union before?
Thank you so much for the, um. I don't know what the board is gonna decide on policy 544, but, um, uh, I did. I don't know what the board is gonna decide on policy 544, but I did reach out to Kate because I'm curious to know from the MCA their input on that question about the professional development. So I'm, I don't know if we don't make the decision tonight on what we're gonna do with that policy. I would like to know what the MCA has to say about that additional training. But then, if you don't know what I'm referring to, you'll see it on the agenda, and we'll be talking about it in a little bit, but thank you so much for coming up.
Okay. I'll be sure to stick around and listen, so I can report back to the MCA.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Board, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just congratulations on the vice position with the MCA.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Should we go to the bathroom? Board, do I have a motion to authorize a supplemental appropriation for the 2025-26 school operating budget in the amount of $440,000?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bond and Dr. Roundtree. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Stanley, please call a roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, the proposed 2025-26 committee of membership for the gifted advisory committee is presented for the board's consideration. The administration recommends approving the 2025-26 gifted advisory committee roster as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 gifted advisory committee membership as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Bond? Any discussion?
I did have one question. I noticed that for the chairperson and the secretary, they're both staff members. I'm gonna approve because I want the committee to be able to move forward. I was curious if they weren't able to get any community members to take leadership, because I know in the past, one of the questions has been about these advisory committees, that the staff has a lot of influence over those advisory committees, and somebody, people feel that the advisory committees should have a little bit more independence. So I did wonder about that, and wanna continue to urge, and I know it's a lot of work, so it might be the case that nobody else stepped up or had the capacity to do it, but I just thought I should at least ask.
Absolutely. I think I can summarize the room as crickets when we asked if anyone else wanted to be considered, but we did hold an open election at our first meeting, and Ms. McGee and Ms. Stanley kindly volunteered to continue to do it, but in a, they weren't pushing themselves forward, if that makes sense.
I wouldn't imagine. Okay.
I also just really wanna celebrate, y'all, that, did you notice there's a student on our advisory committee?
Yeah, I did notice that.
Who volunteered, thanks to Andrew Webb's work, so I'm thrilled to have him on our committee.
That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else I can answer for you?
What's that?
Anything else?
No, no, I just thought I should ask.
Absolutely. No, we asked, open elections, and it was 30 seconds of crickets before poor Ms. McGee said, "Fine, I'll do it again."
And thank, I wanna thank the staff members for stepping up to the plate and doing that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, great. If you have a motion, a second? Yep. Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, the administration will present a policy draft related to elevator accessibility at school events for the school board to review. Dr. Amanda Widener, our interim assistant superintendent, is available for questions. Board, do we have any questions around this draft policy? Yeah?
I have a couple of questions. I know I was involved in some of these conversations with the community member. Thank you for putting the policy together. I know that there was excitement about the fact that there's gonna be signage leading to the elevators. That's, that's an improvement. I did wonder about the key in the lock, where it says elevator shall remain unlocked or otherwise available, et cetera. When elevators require a key, is this a particular issue at BHS? Like, can you explain to me why a key would be necessary versus ones that are locked or unlocked?
So currently, the way most of our elevators are configured in our schools, they all have a key button, so they require a key to access them. Some elevators, not in our school, operate with just a button, and then some have a key button, and apparently the elevators can be configured to have both. So currently, our elevators, most of them, have a key button, so it requires a key in order to access and use them. I think the only exception right now is the new elevator at Christiansburg High School, which will be operated, this current, isn't currently in place, but there'll be a swipe card.
Okay, so I guess I'm wondering in this aspect, like, what is different from the current practice? Because the current practice is that people can't just go up and, if there's a community event, someone who has a disability and needs to use the elevator, they can't just go into the elevator and use it, because you need a key card, correct?
A key card or a key. So this codifies the expectation that when there are public events where people from the public may need to access an elevator, that the school has followed the policy and made sure that there are staff assigned to ensure immediate and easy access to the elevators.
Okay, so that helps answer the question, because the policy doesn't actually say that, because I, reading this policy, someone could read it and say, that person with a disability still has to go and find a staff member to then unlock the elevator. It doesn't actually say in there that, unless I misunderstood, because it says designated staff member shall be responsible for ensuring prompt elevator access to key elevators during event, it's not the same thing, it's saying that a staff member has to be at the elevator during those events.
We can be more clear on that. I mean, the use of the word prompt, that was intended to mean that people should not have to go looking for somebody, that these elevators need to be staffed if they can't be kept open.
Okay, great. I'd love to see that language, because it's still, someone could read that and say, well, that community member has to go find a staff member, and how would they know who that staff member is? Because they're not gonna know who's designated, so I would just, I would have, be a little more specific with that language, that somebody either has to be posted, or so that we don't have the same situation that led to the need for the policy. Thank you.
We can go around on this if we want to. Ms. Franklin? Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, so if I understand that interaction correctly, the elevators are not able to be called unless you have a key to call it.
They can't, they cannot be opened or accessed without a key or a swipe card. Right now, Christiansburg High School, because they haven't finished finalizing the swipe card, is open, but that's not the long-term plan.
And there's, there's no way to, with the key from the administration, to set the elevator as normal, accessible to anybody that wants to call it?
As I understand, communicating with facilities, that is correct. Again, we could work with the companies that installed the elevators to have them reconfigured. However, I assume there would be a cost to that, which we could bring forward if that's the will of the board.
Yeah, I would like to get a, potentially a show of hands that we do that, because having somebody staffed with a key to open the elevator, well, now we need two people, because we have a three-hour event, that person with the key has to go to the bathroom, and now the elevator's not accessible to the person that comes up while they're in the bathroom for five minutes and coming back. And that's putting the stress on the person that needs access to the elevator again. So there's gonna be these cases where there's edge effects that it's not gonna be available. During these public events, the elevator needs to be accessible to anybody that needs it at all time during the public event. You have grandparents have trouble getting up and down stairs, or people that have ADA requirements, so I think we need to actually invest in fixing the hardware that's in the building.
Ms. Purcell?
I mean, it's, if it's a possibility to alter the elevators, I guess, to accommodate that, that would be great to see. I don't know enough about elevators to know if, how we could do that. But I agree with Dr. Roundtree. I guess we'll take it from there.
Ms. Bond?
I don't, I mean, I think everybody needs accessible to it, but I don't think that it's a horrific thing if someone has to wait a minute or two for someone to, you know, come out of the restroom, if that would be the case. I think that's, in my opinion, would be completely accessible if someone, or if there was someone else there that could man that area for the time when someone did have, step away for just a time. I think if they were being paid for that charge, in the understanding that, hey, you have to find someone to cover your time while you're gone. Have we had a problem with that before, other than the one incident?
It's been repetitive incidents.
To what?
It's been repetitive incidents.
Okay.
It's occurred about five times over the past...
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, I knew about the one, but I didn't know about the others, so, okay. I mean, it's, but I also know that if you have something that is not completely governed by some kind of a protective thing, that's also going to be a problem as well. So, yeah, whatever works.
Ms. Parton?
So were these incidents at the same location, or were they at different, or different schools?
Yeah, I'm not certain.
I believe there were reports at two different schools.
So it's been basically just two? And am I thinking right when I say, don't we have faculty or admin that have signed up to work events, like for either, I don't know if it's part of their, you know, turn, when they take turns as far as after-school events, or if it's for a stipend? Don't we, don't we usually have admin that are already assigned to specific school events that might, could handle something of that nature? Or do they have other duties during that event usually, to where they couldn't possibly do something like that?
So it would be up to the administration in each building to determine what staff members are there. Either the administrator who's in the building, or in some cases, they have assigned it to custodians who are working in the building to be the access person.
Okay. I was just trying to think of some ideas that we could possibly do to help that, so thank you.
Yes, I'll chime in. I do think there's value in exploring what our options are with the elevator companies, right? Because, you know, I think that, you know, as we, as we first started discussing this, I mean, I think that the administration has a valid concern about not leaving the elevators open for, for access during the school day, right? For students to do whatever, right? But it would be nice if there was a way to kind of switch it, you know, easily between school mode and public mode, right? If that is a hard setting, that we need the elevator company to come do a thing, right, and charge us, then that doesn't work, right? Then we gotta figure out an either-or option, but it'd be nice to know just what our options are. My, like, my experience mostly is over BHS, right? And we've got an elevator outside the gymnasium, right? So does every basketball game and volleyball game, and every one of those constitute a public event that we'd have to have someone dedicated at, right? I mean, and, you know, that's a lot of staff coverage, and if they gotta go to the bathroom, it is the two people, right? So, I mean, I could see that becoming a challenge for our, you know, administration to manage, so I think what I'm hearing the board say is we'd like a little more information about what's feasible with these elevators.
I can work with Dr. Brown and bring back information at a future meeting, you know, in terms of cost, timeline, what it would entail to reconfigure our elevators, to have the option of having both, both buttons, you know, the button that opens it at certain times with that setting, but then maintaining the key button during the school day.
Because I do think that, to an extent, that answer changes the policy, right? You know, are we providing people to cover this, or is it just a thing that the administration can control, right? It's...
Yeah, and I, because I still think you need to have some kind of governing, even at a evening event, and I think you can't just go public, I mean, you know, and have it open to just whoever. It would be a great world if that didn't become a problem, but it will, I can guarantee you. You know, it's, just kind of watch events that happen around, and you'll see, people take advantage of the situation, they abuse, and things like that, and I think that also opens us up to a liability that we need to also be very, very careful for. So I do think we need to find a way of how we can make sure that it's accessible to anybody who might need it, but not accessible to those who are going to damage, or, you know, vandalize, or do something like that as well, or even just someone maybe being fun, and, you know, getting in and getting out, and those type of elevators aren't, they're not for that type of usage on every, kind of going on and on and on, so anyway, just two cents.
Board, any other thoughts on this?
Yeah, for that, I think we can still put somebody at the elevator to police the elevator, though it's available to people, so if they have to step away, then it's still available, but they'll be right back, and then they see kids messing around with the elevators, they fuss at them. I think it, this policy with our current facilities is, is a step forward, and we're not gonna have the facilities corrected tomorrow, so we probably should think about going ahead and improving the policy. Maybe put into the policy that when, when available, the elevators should be set to public mode, and define public mode, and that the school system is working towards making all of elevators such that during public events, anybody can access them as needed. Policing who can and can't access is really difficult, not everybody that needs an elevator is in a wheelchair. Sometimes you have people that have type 1 diabetes, their blood sugar may be low, they need to use the elevator instead of go up the stairs, so they don't have a sugar crash. There's, there's all kinds of reasons that you might need an elevator that may not be apparent to somebody that is policing that, that asset.
Yeah, I don't think that's what I was saying when I was meaning abuse at all. That's not what I meant.
Board, any other thoughts?
I still think from a directional standpoint, I think, I mean, at least, I think what I'm hearing from the board is we'd like to know a little bit more about the elevators before we kind of move forward with the policy change, because, because what you proposed, Dr. Roundtree, is only feasible if the elevator is supported, right? I mean...
Well, that's why I was suggesting wording it such that if the infrastructure permits, you set it to a mode that anybody can call it and utilize the elevator without key access. If our hardware doesn't permit that, then obviously, the document as written would take precedent, but we've had repetitive incidents with issues with the elevators and access, and we... And we need to go ahead, or in my opinion, we need to go ahead and address it and formalize it in policy. So that events moving forward from when we approve it are governed by this policy, as soon as we can get the infrastructure, the facility material items so that we can unlock them so that they're available by a push button rather than a key access, then we can change the policy to only have that wording. But until that time, we have we'd have to have both wordings with an if statement in there.
Well, let's try to give some clear direction here because I'm not sure what to tell the administration at this point.
I'm not sure if I feel comfortable approving a policy with an if statement with information that we don't know if that's possible yet.
The first reading.
Right.
So we're not going to be approving anything. So I think there was some direction that's the chair has been trying to state so that the administration.
I think I agree. So get some more information, you know, based on the feedback you've heard tonight. If you wanna if you wanna possi propose some changes to make this a little more robust to to survive some of these options. But I still think we just need to know more information before we can make a decision.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? I mean, how long would it take to to find out if these can be easily reconfigured? I mean, that if so, there's a a question if they can be and how much it's going to cost and how long it would take. But I mean, it it probably not going to take weeks, would it, to to get answers to this? Because it seems to me that it I agree with Ms. Priselle that we don't want a policy with if statements. And and so I think it would be good for us to have the information. And if you find out, no, this is going to be really costly, then we move forward with a policy. And 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 I appreciate, I mean, the the elevators should be as easy to use to the community, to the disabled community as stairs. And I think that's the standard that we that we should strive for. But um, yeah, it sounds like you probably have no you don't know how long this might take, but.
I think it's probably reasonable that for our next meeting, it's on October 7th, you know, we could probably work with this facilities department to bring forward more specific information of what it would entail, the timeline, the cost to reconfigure the elevators.
Be great. Yeah, that's what I'd love to see. Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, Dr. Alori Comer, our Director of Secondary Education, will give an overview and update of the GPA revision process.
Good evening, everyone. As requested by the board, a committee has been formed to review the current method for the calculation of grade point averages. And this committee was uh the base of the committee is our secondary advisory committee that was already in place. And we also included some additional high school parents. Some of our parents on the secondary advisory committee were middle school parents. So we wanted to include some high school parents. We also included our four high school principals and four high school counselors. We included also the administrator of gifted programs, administrators of math and science, representatives from our technology department. And that the reason for that was because they have that in-depth knowledge of power school and how all of that works. So um normally, our secondary advisory group meets four times a year. Typically, in October is our first time, but we made sure to go ahead and meet. And I would just like to publicly commend this particular group. The entire meeting was focused on what is best for our students. And that is so refreshing to hear that. Um, and during that first meeting, they had wonderful conversation about what we're currently doing. But then we even took a suggestion from a parent that had sent it in to us. We examined that. And as part of that discussion, we investigated some possible solutions that would benefit our students at the end of their junior year as they begin their college application process and as they begin to apply for scholarships. Um, so our next meeting will be held and we'll be exploring some different ways to calculate GPAs. And we're going to take some scenarios with some real grades. And we're going to look at a lot of different student groups, including those students that take AP courses, that take DE courses. We look at our governor's school students and how their grades are calculated. And we also need to look at our early graduates because we do have some students that graduate early. So it is hopeful that um our next meeting that we have is October 7th at 3:30. And it is hopeful that we can come back to the board with a recommendation no later than the first meeting in November. And so during our October 7th meeting, we're going to be doing some more work. But the this committee truly wants to do what is best for all of our students to give our students the most advantageous opportunities. So thank you for your time. And while this is just a quick overview of what we're doing and planning to do, are there any questions I can answer at this point in the process?
Board, any questions for Dr. Comer?
Can I just ask a really quick question? And thank you so much and thank the committee for um for moving so quickly and taking this up and putting students first. One of the things that I am aware of it that there are students. So it's great to hear that you're you're thinking about the juniors as they're as they're preparing for applying for college. I do know that there are students who um have opportunities to ascend attend summer programming and some of those are competitive and they're not just at the senior level, but also I think they're available to juniors. So I don't know if that's going to be part of the discussion. But I so I know of like I I found out that Stanford had at their humanities center has summer programming that's competitive at like the for juniors and seniors, which means that whatever that their GPA would matter um before their senior year possibly if they want to be involved. And I'm sure that there are science-based ones as well that happen in the summer. So I just want to kind of throw that out there to consider um for the committee to consider is that people who students who might be interested in that programming.
We'll certainly take that in consideration.
Great, thank you so much.
Board, anyone else? Okay, great, thank you so much. Okay, next up, um, policy seven dash three dot one was brought before the board on July 29th. But this um that was the student code of conduct. Um, a discussion was held regarding a more appropriate placement or standalone policy to address the issues around disparity and monitoring student conduct data. Um, school board now discuss a process for data analysis, monitoring of student conduct with input and ideas from the administration and give directions to the administration. So Dr. Graham, do you do you or someone from your administration want to kind of kick us off on this?
Sorry, sure. We, as a team, we have a team that's been looking at this and we are glad to collect and provide the data um as a regular process or we're glad to develop a policy around it, whichever is the board's preference. Um, you've received some information about different ways to collect the data. And we do collect a lot of data in that um in that method using the risk ratio analysis. So we're certainly going to be doing it. It's just a matter of whether you want policy or whether you want us to do it as a practice. We have the whole team here to speak to it if you'd like to hear any more about it. But really, we just need direction from the board as to what you want to see in your next steps.
Okay, great, thank you. Board members, who wants to who wants to start this conversation?
Sure, yeah, I'd like to see that data collection aspects in policy so that it's transparent as to how we go about collecting data on disparity disparities. And then also that it transcends one administration going into another administration um rather than it being something that that might change from from one to another.
Those are the words I would have used also, so I agree.
Great. Keep going around, uh, Dr. Dr. Gietry?
So I agree that there needs to be a policy. One of the questions I had was whether it needs to be a standalone policy. So I know that we do have a policy for student records. And and so I wondered if it might be appropriate in an existing policy to to add this data collection. Um, so I don't know if anybody can speak to that um that question.
Well, and I believe last discussion you had, there was uh some guidance from the lawyer that maybe a standalone policy or being careful where we place the policy would um be more prudent for us. So we can run it by our lawyer to make sure that once a policy is written, that it's in the right placement.
Right, and and I think and I I wasn't part of that conversation, I know, but, you know, separating it out made sense because if it was connected to to discipline, to action. But um whether, you know, if it becomes a standalone policy, you know, kind of stands up as well. But if it's part of our normal data collection, um and could so we do. I know student records is really focused on individual records, but if there's a way to augment. Um, so it's clear that this is for data collection and it's not targeting individual students or groups. It may withstand scrutiny a little bit more than it being its own policy as well. So that's one of the questions that I had.
Okay. Does any of the team want to speak to that or?
I I think basically we'll go back and talk to the lawyer and see which place it should be.
Okay.
Valid point.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes, so um Dr. Gietry kind of touched on what I was going to say as well about the um using it for the purpose of the data collection. And I am very concerned about the placement uh for several reasons. So my recommendation was going to be that we do get with a lawyer to make sure this is written and following whatever kind of guidelines we need to make sure we follow where this is concerned, this policy.
We want to be careful of unintended con consequences and I'd rather avoid that.
Ms. Bond?
I agree.
Great. Ms. Rousseau?
I agree.
Yeah, I think I agree. I agree. I agree as well. I think I think having it in policy is the best course of action. Making sure we get it in the right place is is just as important. I guess in terms of the starting point for that policy, you guys attached the student code of conduct as the original draft where all that was stricken.
Correct.
It's a little hard to read with all all the cross through, but I I assumed that'll be the starting point for that policy.
Exactly, that's what we were planning.
Okay. Board, any other questions or comments?
So when we had discussion around this before, there was a lot of other information that the board agreed would go into this besides just the monitoring that was suggested by and we need to make sure we're not losing all that information from, I think it was May during that meeting.
Yeah, I I think what I have what you're referring to, talking about the risk analysis and the differences.
Right.
We have those documents.
Okay.
Okay, great. Is that good direction for you?
That is. Thank you very much.
Great. Any other, any other go backs on that one? Everybody good? All right. Next up, policy five dash four dot four was originally presented to the board on Jul- on July 29th um with legal counsel as a first read. That was the one around licensed personnel, professional growth. Um, the policy was brought back on eight nineteen for approval within a approved motion to table the vote at the time. School board will now review and discuss the proposed changes to policy five dash four dot four. Maybe Dr. Graham, if you can tee this one up for us as well?
I believe Dr. Widener is going to help me on this one. You guys discussed this policy proposal that was brought forward. Um, I think you had asked for some additional information about required training for staff because the policy proposal as it's written talks about non-academic training activity. So I think I had provided to you through an email some of the training that is required of both our certified and classified staff, although this policy only addressed licensed staff. Um, and most of those requirements fall within the expectation that these are things that are either required by state or federal law or for licensure purposes. Um, so I don't think those trainings would fall under the this, you know, that this category or or this exclusion.
Good, great, thank you. Board, who has who has additional questions or comments around that? This is another place where I think the administration is looking for our direction as to as to what we want that policy to be before we bring it back for a a vote.
Dr. Widener or Dr. Graham, I'm not sure who's the best person to answer this question. What's the difference between training and professional development?
So training are training are sessions that staff are required to complete. Sometimes they're in um, sometimes they're through videos or modules that staff can do independently. Um, professional development is more like a workshop, tends to be more interactive and is generally focused on on instructional practices. So I think most of our professional development that we do falls under that category of being for professional and academic purposes. Uh, whereas trainings can serve a variety of things. I mean, sometimes training is for safety reasons, sometimes it's being, you know, compliant with licensure requirements. You know, we have training, for example, staff are required every year to review training around Title IX, sex-based harassment, abusive work environment prevention, uh hate speech policy, drug-free workplace. And again, that's not sessions that they necessarily have to sit through, but we give them to them in a format of slides and videos that they are required to watch.
Thank you.
Can you go around on this one as well? Dr. Roundtree?
Sure, uh, do we have any professional development or trainings that would not be related to the academic environment?
Do we have any professional development? Was that was that your first part of the question?
Professional development or training that would be related to the non-academic environment?
I think all of our professional development would fall under academic and instructional. I I think we can connect it all to the teacher evaluation standards. And so, you know, all of those are academic and instructional.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
So um the key word was you think, right? And this, for me, is where we get into the area of someone thinking this training doesn't apply to my um instructional needs or my purpose of being an instructor is not for and I'm just going to keep using um our diversity and inclusion because some people don't believe that's part that's necessary for them to understand what biases they may have and how that shows up in their classrooms. Um, and if they say, no, I don't need to take this, then this is giving leeway to that. So unless we say that what we choose, that what we feel, especially through our data collection, is what our uh staff needs, it leaves it wide open for anyone to say, no, I don't need that.
But I think you can connect that expectation to the um state standards for licensed personnel. Um, performance standard six does have a culturally responsive teaching and equitable practices, uh, which I think would cover um those expectations. I mean, that that the things you speak of are all relevant and connected to that standard. And that is a standard that all licensed personnel are evaluated on.
Okay, um, I hear you and I also read that, but. But I still have seen throughout my years that people still don't believe. I need to go the extra mile to understand what my cultural competency is because I'm good. You know, so I have some real concerns when we are not very specific, specific about. What we believe as a district, we need to do as professional development. And quite frankly, when we're talking these kinds of issues, professional development and not individual training is going to be more effective, I believe.
Dr. Getre?
Thank you so much. Okay, so I did a little digging because I was trying to understand what's going on here a little bit more. And so what is non academic training? And why did the General Assembly pass this measure? So when it was introduced by Amanda Batten in on the House side in two thousand twenty three, there. There was specific reference to this clause three of subsection A. And one of the things that was required when it was passed in two thousand twenty three was to do a report. And to survey all the districts on training for codes of student conduct. And so when the bill was revised, so I don't think it's specifically about D E I training as being possibly a target. And I was reading this, so the Senate, they stripped it out and that's the language that is actually in the code. And I'm confused because the language where they keep, we have here, the clause that's in the stricken part is from the earlier legislation. But I don't think it matches what's actually in the code now. And they when they stripped that out, they didn't define what is non academic training. And I find it hard to believe that the General Assembly, which voted unanimously. Would want teachers to have training only once every five years on codes of student conduct. I just, I want more information, so I'd like to get clarification either from on the General Assembly side. Or from V D O E on why that was stripped out? And what is non academic training? Is it so that we are not, we don't require our staff to get training on codes of conduct? I mean, I'm thinking about all the discipline cases that we've been dealing with and all the issues that we've been dealing with. That we would only train once in every five years just boggles my mind. So I'd like more information from V D O E on why that language was stripped out. Why that section two two one two seven nine dot six was stripped out? And once you strip it out, what is the reference point? Because there's no reference point anymore. That's why we don't know what non academic training is because they stripped it out. So I think we need more information from our lawyer and V D O E before we pass that measure. So it when we do make a motion, if we do move forward, I think that we that we pass the other provisions. And not make any changes to this part of the the policy.
We'll keep going around, but let's, since there's a request to get more information, let's kind of chime in if we if we agree with that, just to help give some direction. Ms. Pardon?
So for me, again, I'm was going to point to our legal team for direction with this. But I would also like some clarification as well on what is considered, you know, non academic training or P D. It's kind of vague. I guess that could be looked at differently and opinions could be different on that. It would be nice to have a little bit more clarification on that, just so everyone could be on the on the same page. If it's going to be actually be set in a policy, everybody needs to kind of have the same mindset of thinking and kind of understand it. If we're going to put it in writing. And I was also going to ask, are the professional developments and the training for our administration and teachers? Are those publicly put out for parents and community members to see?
They they can be made, so you like, you mean, if if there's a presentation, could people request access to seeing what those look like?
Not saying access, necessarily access, but just to just to show what P D and what training is being done, to be transparent.
It could be made available. I mean, I'm not saying we publicize it currently, but there's no reason if somebody requested to see what that looked like.
That would be something I would like to have added.
The, I just want to point out on on the proposed revision, that kind of last small paragraph, it's it's vague. It doesn't offer a lot of specificity about what non academic training means. But it does say that is not related to the teacher's instructional, academic or curricular duties. And it does not include any requirement related to licensure. So again, are we asking for kind of a more specific definition beyond that?
Um, it's not a critique of the language that's added to the policy. It's more of, we are being compelled by the General Assembly to pass a policy that's vague. And so it's more about that than it is the language that we have before us. Because if we follow the the Code of Virginia, there's no wiggle room. Like, we are supposed to pass a policy that says no more than every five years. And I just need more clarification, are they saying, is the General Assembly and V D O E saying to us? That we can't ask teachers to go through training for students' codes of conduct, a student code of conduct every year? Because that's is that, my understanding from that two thousand twenty three report is that we do it every year, correct? Well, according to what I've been reading is that we can't do that anymore. Because the intent of the original legislation was focused on that particular training. And so that's what I want clarification on. It's less about the language here as it is about what we what's being asked of us to do. Because personally, I think we should be doing it every year.
Ms. Bond?
I would be curious to know what teachers thought about having training on the Code of Conduct or if they felt that was in their job description. As far as, I mean, knowledge about it and being trained about it is two different things. And I mean, if we're talking discipline and and dress codes and things like that, then I feel like that would be pushed to a principal level. And I so I would be interested in knowing if a teacher feels like that's their responsibility to do that. Or if they feel like that's another level of education. That's really the only comment I have.
Do you have an opinion about seeking additional legal clarification?
Not really.
Ms. Rousseau?
Uh, I'm fine to seek clarification for some of the vague elements of the revisions to that part of the policy. But I also think it's important for us to pass provision ten. In red so that. Staff who are supporting students with autism spectrum disorder have the training that they need to work with those students.
Think we already kind of went around, but I do want to give everybody some feedback on whether to get additional legal direction or not, so. Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, I agree that we need to go ahead and pass item ten there in the list. And I also agree that we should get additional legal feedback. The being trained on the Code of Conduct is part of the the academic job of being in a building with students and whatnot. But I I don't like the vagueness that the General Assembly is pushing down either.
Ms. Franklin?
So, yeah, I agree with with section ten. But the rest of it, I think I've said how I agree and what I think about that.
Do you feel like getting additional legal?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, good. I think we're mostly in agreement on that, so try to get some greater clarity in terms of the rationale behind those additions. You know, it'd be nice to have some examples, right? Like maybe balance a suit of code of conduct by someone, does that fall under this purview or not, right? And maybe some specifics around what would be non academic training, just so like we know what we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts or comments?
Can I just ask one question here, since we we had this before us already? Does it make more sense to to wait? Because what I'm hearing here is that it seems like there's probably a consensus to to get in place item ten. Would it be better for us, since I don't know if this is a second reading or not? To put forward a a motion to adopt the 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 policy for for the change for ten, but not the rest? And and wait on that because it might take some time to get some answers? Does the administration? Have a recommendation if there is a consensus on? On the training for the autism spectrum disorder? Or you content just to wait until we get more information on non academic training?
If if the board wanted to go ahead and prove through number ten tonight, that would be fine. So we can move forward and then bring the other section back.
Do you have a motion?
So I I can put forward a motion if if the discussion's over. So I move that we adopt revisions to policy five four four up to and including item ten. I don't know if there's a subsection there, but that would be my motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion about that? Okay. Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Great, thank you. All right, board, we covered a lot of ground tonight. We are now to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business?
So I have one item. So over a year ago. I raised the question of our children who are suspended for ten days without any support. Which was not the practice of this district in the very beginning when we started with the Phoenix program. Yes, that was called it initially, right? And now we're sending kids out of school for ten days, sometimes maybe a little more, a little less, and they have no support. The whole purpose was get, keep those kids. In an educational setting. So we might be punishing them by pulling them out of the mainstream of their buildings. But we were not also punishing them with by denying them access to education, which benefits no one. And somehow or another, that has gotten done away with. And we need to correct that. We were told twice that that was being worked on, but that's been more than a year ago and we have gotten nothing. Also, we have also asked for the disciplined matrix that's referred to in several different places in our documents. But we've not seen that matrix. So we don't even know how it's being followed. If it's even something that the board needs to weigh in on. So I would like to know what's going on, especially with our students going out with no support.
I'll second that.
I guess I'd I'd put the question to the administration, given, given where we are with current leadership. Are we, I mean, I feel like a a presentation around that.
Yep.
Feels reasonable for sure and the discipline matrix, absolutely.
We we can bring you back a presentation on the Phoenix program and and get the discipline matrix to you. And I assume you would want not only what the program would entail, but the cost associated with that.
And to an extent, I mean, I guess just creative thinking around around the underlying problem, right? Like, you know, the Phoenix program was a solution. And I've heard pros and cons, right? Are there other ideas we should be we should be considering? But I think to Ms. Franklin's point, like, let's, let's, let's look at that problem with some fresh eyes and see what we can come up with.
We'll get a team together and bring a presentation once they have created some ideas.
Okay. Does that meet your meet your ask, Ms. Franklin?
Yeah, great, agreed. Can we, can we put an expectation of the working session in October that gives them a full month?
I think that'll work.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Board, any other items of unfinished business? One item that I'll I'll bring up here, because I don't want to get lost, because I've had a couple of conversations around it. At a board retreat, we talked about the the. The potential inclusion of of local field trips in our in our consent items as well. And we're still just, we're still just seeing the state one, so the out of state ones. So I know there's been some conversations on that. Unfinished business is in the right place to have that conversation. But I think that is a, I know the administration has perspectives on that. And I think the board needs to hear that, have a good conversation and provide direction in terms of exactly what we're asking for there.
So are you asking for that for my thoughts now or?
I guess that's maybe not appropriate for this item, but it's a conversation that we need to have, right?
So we'll be glad to share our thoughts on that whenever.
Okay.
I I thought that conversation was more along the lines of there were some field trips that were in the Northern Virginia area that were slipping into that consent item. And we were suggesting that they didn't belong, but you're suggesting that we want things that are?
I think I think we should probably have that conversation more holistically, right? Because I think perhaps it wasn't clear what the board was asking for.
Okay.
You know, there's, there are different perspectives we need to consider as a part of that and provide some clear direction.
Because in the past, we did see all field trips. And I think once COVID hit and there was the concern about opening things back up for field trips. There was a big emphasis on out of state. And, you know, because there were such different guidelines in different states as to protocol. So that's maybe where things have gotten kind of out of balance. But I would like to know where where our kids are at and what they're doing. I think that's one of the ways we do that.
Can I ask the question, since you have the the historical knowledge on that? In the past, when that was done, was that done for board awareness or board approval? Because those are two different things.
Yeah, best of my recollection, recollection, it was approval. It was all done at one time so that we were approving the field trips.
Okay.
We'll do a little research.
Because I think then we had some discussion about field trips being something that was geared around. True learning of whatnot, just kind of like, okay, let's go to an apple farm to, you know, pick apples. Let's let's make sure that's in or around the the learning aspect. And I think that's when we had gotten into real discussion about what field trips and if we approved them.
Okay, great. All right, board, any other items of unfinished business? Any items of new business?
Given some recent discipline issues that we have encountered as a board. Some local instances of gun violence and national instances of gun violence. I wanted to ask the administration to consider adopting the V D O E curriculum for K to five students. That's surrounding gun safety education. for K to five students that's surrounding gun safety education.
So you're asking us to consider adopting a new curriculum?
It already exists, you know, as part of the, of the VDOE. As I understand, it's not something that we use at MCPS, but maybe it could be integrated into health or some, some other part of the instructional day.
Okay, so I think I would get, I need to get a team together to look at that curriculum and see if it's overlapping something we already have and what the associated costs are and, and a timeline if we wanted to adopt it. So we can, we can have a team look at that.
Thank you.
Board, can we get some, some consensus on that, since that's going to provide some work? Yeah.
This is the Board.
Okay. I guess, a show of hands if you agree. Let's make it faster, if anybody wants to.
Yeah, it's already, it's already like a VDOE curriculum. Sorry, I moved my hands around too much. I'm Italian.
We have had some younger students that were maybe not quite aware of some things just to, just for more information and for more knowledge on that subject, possibly, assuming.
Okay. Looks like we have a consensus around that. Yes, sir?
Yeah, but this is about something else, but yeah, I agree.
All right, great, thank you.
Yep. So I forgot to mention this last time, and I almost forgot again. One of the things I wanted to ask about. So when we got the, all the policy updates from, from the lawyer, one of the things that was not in there, because it's not required, is that the General Assembly did update the driver education program. I don't know if anybody noticed this, but one of the things that they've, as, as we know now in the division, you have to hire a, someone to do the behind-the-wheel training. And what they added is that they are strongly encouraging school divisions to include behind-the-wheel training, to, to provide that to students. And I know it's, it can be very difficult for students to arrange that behind the wheel. I mean, we have students who work, parents who work. And so I'm, I'm curious to see if there is a consensus on the Board for exploring that option and giving the direction to the administration to explore that option. This can be for another conversation, but I just didn't want to forget that because it was like, I think that that would be a, a real service in our, in our community to be able to do that.
And, and finding the time to do that is minimal compared to finding the money to be able to afford to do that, because there are many students who cannot afford that on their own. It's, it's a big chunk of money.
And there are not that many people who provide that, so like coordinating, it can be difficult. So there is just, it's, it's a burden, I think. And so since the General Assembly is strongly, strongly encouraging, I think that we should at least explore it, explore that option.
I'm even going to go as far as to add that since COVID, several of our local businesses that were providing that service are no longer in service. Because during COVID, they actually really couldn't do the behind-the-wheel. And so that went on for so long that they could no longer keep the business open, or when they tried to go back to it, it, it wasn't feasible. So I do know, again, it is very expensive, and we probably just don't have enough places offering it. So I know, I can't remember why exactly. I know it's been a while why we got, or why it no longer was being done, provided by the school. But all I know is I took it at the school, God damn. But, you know, my daughter came through, and that's been, you know, several, several, at least, what, five years ago? And we had to find, we had the book part done at the school, but we had to find the actual behind-the-wheel services that had to be done by someone else, right?
Okay, great. Can we get a show of hands for Board members who want the administration to explore this and report back to us? Great. I remember my high school, we had a little, little cheesy driving simulator and the whole, the back parking lot was all the students out there practicing, and that's, that's how I remember it. Oh, we had both, yeah, yeah. They started us off in the simulator, though. Great. All right, Board, any other items of new business? Or wait, yeah. Okay, great. Are there any announcements?
I have a couple. I'll be real quick. So I want to say that I was able to go to the Eastern Montgomery High School Mustangs football game last Friday night against Northwood. It was an awesome game. We were leading at halftime, but unfortunately, the remainder of the game didn't turn out the way we expected, but we had a great crowd. The cheerleaders invited all the cheerleaders to come and cheer with them and put on a routine to Cotton Eye Joe, which was pretty awesome. And I got to hear the band perform, and they did a phenomenal job as well. So it was, it was a really good time. And I do want to say, if you ever go, you need to get the $5 cheeseburger that's done on the big grill in the back, done fresh. It was the best cheeseburger I've ever put in my mouth. So I would recommend you go down there for a game just to get the cheeseburger. So shout out to them. And they also recognized, they had rec. night, Friday night, too, which I thought was great. They had a lot of community involvement, and it was just a, a really good night. I also want to say congratulations to Shawsville Middle School, who won their first home game on September 2nd, their eighth-grade football team. So congratulations to them. And just to let the community members down that way, and at Falling Branch Elementary Families and Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. Next week, September 25th, is the Family Bingo Night. It's from 6:00 to 7:30 at each school. Eastern Montgomery is going to have their own, and Falling Branch is going to do their own. $5, you get water, popcorn, and 10 rounds of bingo. So it sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun. And I do want to also mention that Eastern Montgomery Elementary School had a, an item that they did surrounding Grandparents' Day the week of September night through the 12th, where they had every grade level what was able to invite their grandparents to come have lunch with them and sit down and, and meet all their friends and have lunch with them. So I thought that was a pretty cool idea, so that's all I had.
Great. Yep.
I'll just say tomorrow evening is the BHS Parade in downtown Blacksburg. Last year, I was in a convertible. Don't bring any rotten eggs, but it'd be great to have community members out in downtown Blacksburg to, yeah, for that. Thanks.
Awesome. Any other announcements?
I'd like to thank Christiansburg High School for hosting the Festival of the Bands last weekend. Last Saturday was really busy all over the county, but that's such a fun event. And all the parents and the kids and the band directors that put so much heart into their performances. It's a great, great thing.
Awesome. Anyone else? I'll also be at that homecoming parade tomorrow, and if you, if you bring eggs, throw them at that guy, not me. All righty, upcoming school board meetings, our upcoming agendas are in Board docs. And with that, I adjourn this meeting at 10:10 PM.